Can everybody take a seat, please? We're getting ready to begin. Everybody take a seat. We're getting ready to begin. Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Council Preliminary Budget Hearing on Hospitals. At this time, can everybody please silence your cell phones? If you wish to testify, please go up to the sergeant's arms desk to fill out a testimony slip. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach today's. I repeat, no one is to approach today's. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse, Chair of the Committee on Hospitals. Thank you for attending today's hearing on the city's fiscal 2025 preliminary budget and the New York City Health and Hospital Corporation's five-year operating and capital plans for 2024 to 2028. During today's hearing, we will review H&amp;H's operating fiscal 2025 budget of $3 billion, which represents nearly 3% of the city's budget. But first and foremost, I would like to thank everyone that has joined us today and my colleague, Councilwoman Schulman. H&amp;H's budget is 97% funded by city funds to provide services for New Yorkers, including but not limited to NYC Care, mental health services, and asylum seeker services. Asylum seeker services in particular are funded for $1.8 billion in the fiscal 2025 preliminary plan, which makes up 60% of H&amp;H's budget. Even though H&amp;H's budget is mostly made up of asylum seeker funds in the preliminary budget, it's difficult to determine what direct services are provided with this funding. We would definitely like to hear from the administration about the services. They provide as well as additional context on the $1 billion peg to asylum seeker services in the fiscal 2025 preliminary plan. I would also like to learn more about the sicko cell services that H&amp;H provides. As you know, sicko cell disease is a very important topic to me, and we have a long way to go with ensuring equity with how we treat and even discuss sicko cell disease. In relation to my bill, Local Law 163 of 2023, we'd like to discuss H&amp;H's current status when it comes to sicko cell disease, as well as some details about the current planning process for implementing the bill. It's important to take care of New Yorkers, especially with their health, but we should not forget to take care of our medical professionals as well. We held a hearing on February 29th on the topic related to medical residents in H&amp;H, and their working conditions are very alarming. Our residents are overworked, often underpaid, and are burnt out as a result. New York City residency are notoriously difficult to match into, despite the high cost of living and low starting pay, but there are still vacancies in H&amp;H residency's program. To tab it all off, H&amp;H residents are paid less than residents at private hospitals for doing the same work. The hearing was the first step, but we must take action immediately to improve the quality of life for those residents, as they are the doctors of the future. New Yorkers depend on their services. For real. I'd like to thank my committee staff, Committee Counsel Viera Oga Zawawa, Policy Analyst Manud Butt, and Finance Analyst Danielle Glantz for Unit Head and Florentine Cabery for their work on this hearing. I would also like to thank my Chief of Staff, Saeed Joseph, and the rest of my staff, of course, for their hard work. I will now turn it over to Committee Counsel to administer their oath. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. We will now hear testimony from the administration. Before we begin, I will administer the affirmation. Panelists, please raise your right hand. I will read the affirmation once and then call on each of you individually to respond. Dr. Katz, Dr. Patsy Yang, Mr. John Olberg, thank you. You may begin.
Dr. Katz, the welcome. Thanks, you can begin.
And we're so honored to be before you. I think it's so terrific that this committee is headed by a nurse who understands the health of New York City. Happy to see Councilmember Schulman, who's been a great public health advocate and advocate for healthcare in Queens. I'm Dr. Mitch Katz. I'm a primary care physician, and I'm President and CEO of New York City Health and Hospitals. I'm joined today by John Olberg, who I think is one of the smartest CFOs I've ever worked with in healthcare, and Dr. Patsy Yang, who does a great job running our correctional health services throughout the city. I'm happy to report on our finances. As you know, we're the largest system municipal in the country. Every day, our 40,000 employees live our mission of providing high-quality healthcare with compassion, dignity, and respect to all, regardless of income, gender, identity, race, sexual preference, or insurance status. We have, since we've last seen you, had a really terrific year that included connecting 300 patients to permanent housing, converting our medical units, which provided life-saving treatment during COVID, back to psychiatric units, expanded our services for survivors of domestic violence, earned Medicare Shared Savings for reducing costs and providing high-quality care. We continue to grow our virtual express care, and I'm very proud that we are the only public system in the entire nation to provide abortion care through our telehealth virtual care system. We opened the new Ruth Bader Ginsburg Hospital. I remember the chair being there, and what a great, great day that was, celebrating by the statue of her, the first-ever reentry service center at Rikers. We also at Rikers have been able to distribute free smartphones so that we can make sure that people leaving Rikers are able to get the care they need. We opened ground on 93 apartments at Wood Hall on an old parking lot, and one of my goals when I first came here was to change every parking lot into a supportive housing project for our patients. Our Metro Plus Health Plan grew to 750,000 members, and New York City Care Enrollment reached 125,000 members, which I'm particularly proud of, having created healthy San Francisco in San Francisco and LA Care in LA. This is a larger, more comprehensive program than either of those, and I'm very proud of it. Our hospital on Staten Island Seaview was ranked as the number-one nursing home in all of New York State. We continued the journey with Plain Tree International for patient-centered care. We distributed $1 million to 27 behavioral health providers in the way of paying off their student loans in exchange for them committing to serve our system for three years. This is something that we hope to extend throughout our system, and as the chair has already made reference to, we have been a critical part of the city's response to the asylum seeker crisis in New York City. Our financial performance has done very well, and that's what's enabled us to maintain our services even with the need to participate in the city's pegs and markedly increase salaries to our nurses, but because we keep generating additional patient care revenue from insurance companies, not from patients, we're not interested in billing patients. We're very interested in billing insurance companies, and that's what enables us to keep expanding our services. Our closing cash was $500 million at the end of December, which is 18 days cash on hand. As we look at our preliminary financial plan, I'm very proud that our fiscal picture remains stable. We will continue to work with the City Council, with the Mayor's Office, with ONB, to handle whatever challenges are out there. We appreciate that the city has been our advocate in maintaining disproportionate share funding, which we are very reliant on. We also continue to work with the state to make sure that they understand our fiscal needs. As we look into the out years, there are challenges. We are projecting operating losses because those dish cuts are in the budget, but we hope that with the support of the City Council and the mayor, we are able to forestall those cuts. It's our goal to continue to expand our services, not to contract them. With that, Madam Chair, I look forward to your questions and your recommendations for us.
I have been joined by my colleague, Mamorato. Before I start, I have to say thank you to you. In a time that is so difficult, I always wonder about you, and I have to really honestly say thank you. This is one of the largest structure of a medical system in our nation, and you, it's a lot of pressure in asylum seekers and all the things that go around us. So honestly, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
H&amp;H's currently budget for asylum seekers is $1.8 billion in fiscal 2025, which makes us, I mean, makes up nearly 60% of the system budget. In the last fiscal year, the city relied most heavily on the Department of Homeless Services to provide shelter services for asylum seekers. In the current year, there has been a shift, with H&amp;H's budget having the majority of asylum seekers' funding, and H&amp;H becoming the larger provider of shelter services for asylum seekers. Why has H&amp;H, and a provider of health services, been leaned on so heavily by the administration for provision of shelter, I mean, provision of shelter to the asylum seekers?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's been an interesting history through the city. So first, our excellent colleagues in HRRA and within the Department of Homeless Services and the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs were able to meet the challenge of asylum seekers. But as the number of buses kept growing and the number of people coming to our city, they reached a point where all of the shelter rooms were full, and there was no place for people to go. At that moment, we volunteered because Health and Hospitals had done a lot of work creating hotel rooms under COVID, and we knew how to do it, and we knew how to do it quickly. So we opened up a large number of homeless hotels and then also outdoor shelter areas with tents in order to meet the needs of asylum seekers. I see the city right now in a different place, a more mature place, where the number of asylum seekers, while it hasn't decreased, it's stable. We're no longer seeing markedly increased numbers. The numbers of new asylum seekers equal the number of asylum seekers who we've been able to help to get to their next step in the city. And also, the city is in a mature state with regard to doing RFPs for services. At the beginning, when we were literally trying to create thousands of rooms for people in a period of weeks, we had to use emergency provisions to get the necessary food and laundry and rooms and services. Now that we're stable, we're able to look at, okay, we need to put out RFPs to get the city's best possible price. We need to look across all of the departments and standardize the prices, and also, Health and Hospitals can take a less of a major role in this. I mean, again, we got involved because the city needed an emergency response. Now that it's stable, I think we will be less involved. Our major roles will continue to be the intake center. I think that's an important role for us because of the health screening, especially making sure that people are screened for tuberculosis and treated if they have tuberculosis, making sure that people are appropriately vaccinated, making sure that if they're eligible for health insurance, they get health insurance, so the city is not covering the cost of their medical care, and then assigning them based on whether they're a single adult or an adult with young children to the appropriate housing place. At the other end of the process, we'll continue to run the case management services, which interact with everybody regardless of whether you're in our shelter system or in our sister agency's shelter systems. We work with individuals and families to figure out where their next stop is, what are the obstacles for them to get out of shelter, what do they need to go into the next spot. I think those two are the most critical. Right now, we're still running 14 different shelter sites, both indoor and outdoor. Over the next period of time, we're going to continue to transition those to our sister agencies. I don't, our focus should always be providing services. I don't see us as having to carry leases. That's not necessarily our expertise, but again, we'll always do what the city needs. We see ourselves, in part because we're a health system, we're used to the idea of triage. We run 24 hours, seven day a week. We're used to the idea of people needing something at 3:00 a.m., and so, in that sense, our involvement will always make sense on an emergency basis. But again, as things get more and more stable, we see ourselves as having a smaller role in providing overall services. I'll give you one more example. We've done the food RFP for all of the different sites, because, again, this was necessary to be done quickly. As the system matures, that might not be a sensible role for Health and Hospitals to play. We're not, a food provider is not our number-one, you know, expertise.
Thank you, Dr. Katz. One of the things that we'd like to see more nonprofit take over the bid that we have in is open bid. That's what we would like to see, too. Does this shift of the asylum seeker funding have anything to do with the H&amp;H procurement process, and/or differs from the process of other city agencies?
It does in the sense that Health and Hospitals is, was created as a public benefit corporation by New York State, and so our procurement rules are somewhat more flexible than the city's procurement rules. And again, I think that's very relevant in an emergency. I don't think it's as relevant once you stabilize the system. I think if you need something, and when the city needs something in four, five weeks, we're a good agency to call on. I think when we're talking about, you know, this is what we need for the next three years, that should be done through the city's usual process.
Thank you. H&amp;H includes its cost for delivery of services for asylum seekers and direct rate of 15%. In fiscal 2023, the city paid H&amp;H $62 million for the indirect rate. How much has been paid in fiscal 2024? Why the city subsidizing H&amp;H budget, leaving less funds for provision of services to asylum seekers?
Introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is John Olberg. Nice to see you. I would first, first I'd like to say, we very much appreciate it. Health and Hospitals, you know, my staff had a chance to go through the report that was generated by the committee, and it's reassuring from our standpoint that we are, you know, communicating and people are following, you know, the vast numbers that are transacting on and off the Health and Hospitals ledger. So I do want to say, you know, thank you for that. Our numbers, for the most part, you know, do in fact tie out. In answer to your question, you know, indirect is always a component of, you know, the reimbursement that we get from the city. It's really intended to cover our administrative costs, and any dollar that we don't use for that purpose, we give back to the city, or we will use, you know, for the program. We're very sensitive to that, but the indirect rate is really kind of a common, you know, grant funding mechanism to cover the cost of our staff and all the overhead expenses.
And what direct services does H&amp;H provide for asylum seekers?
So right now, we're the intake, we're the case management at the other end, and we're providing shelter at 14 different sites. We're doing all of the food for all of the sites, and at our sites, we are involved in the laundry and the security issues as well. In addition to that, of course, we provide the medical care, but that we do is part of our regular mission, not, that's, the cost of that medical care is not part of this budget, because we view that as our mission for the city to provide care to everyone regardless of their insurance status.
That's why I appreciate you even more.
And we have the, as one happy note that you'll appreciate, we've delivered a lot of babies.
Yeah.
Which makes us very happy.
In the fiscal 2025 preliminary plan, H&amp;H received a peg of over $1 billion to asylum seeker services. How does this peg amount determine? With the reduction in funding for asylum seekers due to updated population projections, are there going to be changes in the services, in services delivered? And with the population projection shifting, will the number of contracts be modified, lessen? If so, what was, I mean, for what services? I think some of them you answered, but you can clarify.
Sure. We've been working, I think, very productively with our sister agencies and ONB on how do we reduce the cost so that it does not impact other city services and still provide the services that asylum seekers need? And I think the formulas that we have found are that we can now, through the use of nonprofits, through the use of RFPs to get more competitive prices, now that we can have a predictable amount, know what we're looking for, we've been able to drive down the prices. So people are getting the same services, but the city is paying less for those services. And also, the initial projections assume that the number of asylum seekers was going to keep growing, and that does not seem to be true, and that's enabled the dollar amount to decrease as well.
Yeah, I'm praying for a decrease, too. The number plan included an additional $2.6 billion for asylum seeker services. When this amount was added to H&amp;H's budget, did you anticipate reducing $1 billion shortly after?
Yes, I would say the one, the $2.6 billion is the FY '24 and FY '25 numbers, which is noted in the report. The billion dollars in savings is really the amount for FY '25, and I guess the best way to look at it is without those reductions, the program would have grown by another billion. So we did anticipate, right, that we were going to have to find savings as part of the budget process. So we, you know, as Mitch just said, we believe those are all, you know, good numbers for the year, and we'll have to track it as the year goes on.
How many contract for asylum seeker related services does H&amp;H currently manage?
We would have to provide you with that number. We have that available. I don't have it here.
So you would provide it to us?
Sure. There are several security contracts, several project management contracts, several food contracts, and then there are individual leases. So I'd say we're in the ballpark of 12 to 15, but we'll get you the exact number.
Thank you. We have been joined by Palladino, CM Books Power, and Rivera. Thank you. Vacancies in H&amp;H. There are several terms and conditions that require H&amp;H to provide headcount updates to the council quarterly, booking down by job title. The quarterly headcounts don't provide budgeted headcount in comparison to the actual amounts. What H&amp;H's current vacancy rate? Can you provide the vacancy rates by job title, such as for physician, registered nurses, and residents?
So I'll let John talk about the technical, but I think it's important for transparency to explain to people who are listening that because of Health and Hospitals as an agency, our positions are not the same as the city positions, right? So the city traditionally, a true city department will say, Department A, you have 800 physicians. Department B, you have 1,000 physicians, and then those physicians are filled or vacant. Health and Hospitals, because we are primarily a revenue department, we primarily get revenue from insurance companies for taking care of our patients, and we have to have the appropriate staff. So all of our nursing, for example, a topic you're passionate about, is based on ratios of this many patients should equal this number of nurses. If we don't have that number of nurses in permanent positions, we're going to first ask people if they want overtime, then we're going to go to our internal registry, then we're going to go to an external registry. Same with doctors, we're going to ask them to do sessional work. If we can't get sessional work, then we will go to a locums or a contract. So for us, a vacancy is not exactly a vacancy, because we can't have a trauma center, and I'm sorry, there's a vacancy. There always has to be a doctor, a nurse, a social worker, right? So can you provide a better sense of the actual numbers?
Yeah, I think we do report a number of about 9% for nursing, but as Mitch, as Dr. Katz had indicated, we've moved more toward dynamic budget. So we try to make sure that there's enough resources at the bedside all the time, and, you know, and the nurse ratio is, I think, a good example of that. We actually appreciate budgeting based on a ratio where we have to have a prescribed number of nurses to meet the needs of that bed. And as our volumes go up and we have more discharges and admissions, we allow the budget to go up with it. And that's a little bit different, right, as Dr. Katz had indicated, versus other city agencies, or maybe even the way other hospitals, right, develop their budget. But we think it's very important that there's always the resources needed at the bedside, and that's nursing and food service and all the other services that are required to meet and provide quality care.
Is it possible you can book that down by hospitals?
Break down the vacancies?
Yeah.
Sure. We can break that down.
What is the average current length of the onboarding process for H&amp;H positions?
Various, of course, so by field, for nurses, our largest, it's about three months of training once they sign. So, and we do, we do job fairs where we sign right at that fair. So you want to be a nurse at Wood Hall, sign the form, you're a nurse at Wood Hall, start training on Monday, three months. The physicians have a, often a longer time to credential, because there is, it's not only our determining there that they have the appropriate license and specialty, but every insurance company requires separate credentials. So, for example, I, as a primary care gouverneur, I'm not only credentialed by Health and Hospitals, but I'm credentialed by 12 other insurance programs that we work with, each of which requires an individual form and signature. So the, there's usually about a three-month period for a physician before they can even start work. And then how long it takes for them to be able to take a patient load is very dependent on which area, whether they're a surgeon, a dentist, but I'd say in general, it's four to six weeks.
Would it be possible for H&amp;H to provide budgeted headcount along with the information provided as per the terms and conditions?
Yes.
So we'll get that?
Yes.
Okay. On the parity. On Thursday, February 29th, we held a hearing on resident working conditions and concern. H&amp;H residents brought to our attention that they are holding contract negotiations with the administration. with the administration. According to the various reports, the average medical school death for a resident in 2020 was approximately two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And the median annual salary for residents is in New York, in New York City, was sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars. For first-year residents at H and H House Facilities, the median annual salary was under sixty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Considering the incredibly high cost of living in New York City, how are you ensuring living wages for residents? How does H and H plan to address the pay parity within the residents?
Thank you. I was obviously a medical resident myself and a proud member of C I R at the time. I consider myself a resident advocate because I know that the quality of care my patients get depend heavily on the residents because of the volume and the amount of care they do. The city negotiates our contracts with C I R. We believe that negotiations are happening and are going well. It's not unusual for the city to lag in terms of when it signs its contracts and often does retroactive raises to going backward. I do think that there is, no matter what, a challenge around living in New York, especially for people moving here, you know, who don't have an established family home. New York City is expensive place to rent. I, I feel that one of the best solutions is loan repayment. For people who come to work for us because of the patients that we care for, they will get loan repayment if they choose employment with us. But I certainly hope that coming out of the city O L R, C I R negotiations are equity. And as you know, with nurses, you helped me tremendously to achieve a contract that delivered equity. You know, I, I don't believe there's any glory in paying people less. I think you want to pay people a fair salary and you want to expect a lot of them. And that, to me, that's always the right answer.
Thank you. And being a doctor, I'm expecting for you to advocating for those residents because you know exactly what we're talking about. And the rent is, I don't want to say the word, high. A D-word high. But anyway, I, I'm an experienced mom because my son graduated from, from medical school in downstate, so it has been difficult, and he could not even stay in New York. He has to go outside of New York after he finished totally because the cost is too high. Yes, Dr. Katz, thank you. It has been reported that two thousand, three hundred residents have been working at N Y C H and H Hospitals without a contract since December twenty-twenty-one. When their previous agreement expired, this resident make up approximately half of all physicians in the public hospital system in New York. What is the delay in renewing their contracts? And when do you estimate them to be renewed? You answered that partly already, but like I said, I'm expecting for you to, to do your very best on that one because it's unfair to them.
I got it.
So what's your, are you being involved right now in the process?
We, we are very much involved, and I think for a long time, this, the city was not yet engaged with C I R, and C I R and the city now are very engaged. And I feel certain that this is going to get resolved soon.
Okay. And the following question you have to, has H and H assessed the impact on care for New Yorkers if H and H residents decide to go on a strike?
Well, they, for the ones who were employed by the city, as you know, they cannot strike. The ones that are employed through affiliations, right, they could strike. I certainly don't think that's what is going to happen, and I don't think that's the best outcome for a union strikes because the management is unresponsive. And I don't think that's going to be the case here.
We cannot afford that either. Has H and H assesses the impact? You said yes. You've seen the impact already. So if they go on strike, would H and H Hospital, particularly for emergency room services, so what would you do?
Right, well, I'll, I'll be working in that emergency room, I can assure you of that. So, I mean, we, we had to weather at Elmhurst a strike that occurred for residents that were not in our employment, and we kept the hospital open. There are always emergency provisions for diversion, for canceling elective surgeries, for having administrative physicians work clinically, but none of these are good solutions. But you, we, we are always prepared, you know, for a crisis. Again, I think that, I think every health system, as you know, in your area, you know, when Wood Hall flooded, we moved a hundred and thirty-five patients safely to other health and hospital facilities without anyone getting hurt. Would I like to do that again? No. But, but part of, part of being a large healthcare system should be the ability to respond to an emergency. I think in this case, right, it's in everybody's interest to come to a fair settlement with the residents. And so, because I believe it's the right thing, I think we will achieve it.
Thank you on that, and I want to say thank you for the strike on, at Elmhurst Hospital. We were able to talk and try to get, and thank you for helping me because I don't want the doctors to be on the street. I want to be, them to be in the hospital. But we need more. As usual, you know, you have to get those residents in a good shape. The, the usage of temporary nurses has brought about additional issues with staffing our hospitals, as temporary nurses are paid higher than H and H nurses. How many additional temporary nurses have been hired since adoption? And what is the current total?
I'm going to let John give you the numbers, but what I'll tell you, and again, I appreciate your support, because we got that nurse contract signed and achieved nurse parity, we have now been extremely successful in hiring nurses who work for H and H. And every week, we have fewer registry nurses. And my goal is to use registry nurses the way it was meant, which was for unexpected leave. So somebody needs a family leave, somebody is on disability, that's a perfect use of a registry nurse because it's not a permanent position. You're not going to hire somebody else for the next four months. But the reliance on registry nurses, I don't want to say our bad because our number one focus is to take care of patients. And because we work on a registry, if I cannot hire my own nurses, I'm not going to let anybody go without care. So then I have to go to registry nurses. But now that I have fair wages for my nurses, now I can hire nurses, and each week, we diminish the number of registry nurses. So do you have the numbers, John?
Yes. I would say that, you know, last year, at about this time, over twenty percent of the nurse workforce, when we spoke here, was registry nurses. And, you know, we're happy to report that we've hired over eight hundred and fifty new H and H nurses, and that's allowed us to start to decant the number of registry nurses. And I think thus far, we've, we've probably had about three hundred and fifty that have fulfilled their contract and left. The, the amount remaining, I can get you the, the exact number, but I would say roughly eight hundred to nine hundred registry nurses remain.
Eight hundred to nine hundred?
Yeah, but we'll, we'll, we'll get you the exact number.
It, it decreases every week as the new nurses come out of training. Right? So when, the moment we hire the new nurse, we can't let go of the registry nurse because we have to train the new nurses. So once we train the new nurse, then as soon as that new nurse can start on the ward, then we can end the contract with the registry nurse.
By the way, I appreciate that program, residency nurses. It's a good program. Has this number has been impacted by hiring freeze?
No, we're not, Health and Hospitals is not subject to the hiring freeze.
How much have you spent on traveling nurses since fiscal twenty-twenty-four adapted?
A large number.
It's a large number, and it's, it's one that's, it's always moving down at this point, as you know, Dr. Katz had, had mentioned. But we can provide you with the numbers for twenty-three and twenty-four and even, you know, what we're projecting. We call this internally the glide path, right? It's, it's an eighteen-month period by which we want to, we've set targets for each of our facilities to try to, you know, reduce the number that we have. And again, I think the good news, certainly the good news for me from a financial perspective, and I think a good news, right, for the hospital, is that we have hired eight hundred and fifty, you know, new nurses. And that, that really, the, the reason for that is, is the contract, we think, with the nurses is a good one, and it's attracting high-quality nurses that are permanently going to be, to be ours. But in answer to the number, we can get you and certainly provide to the committee the amount of money that we have spent. It, it is a tremendously large number.
You know, as being a registered nurse, I have to say that based on the amount of money that you had pay on those nurses, so when you have the resident nurse working, I hope they get a pay that almost, or equal or even more because of the fact they're staying in the city of New York. So at least we can uplift them and they can stay in our city. How much have you spent on traveling nurse? I said that in comparison to, have you analyzed how much funding the city will save if hired permanent nurses instead? Which I was leading to that.
Yeah, I, I'll say it's, you know, it's an interesting, you know, budget concept. It's not that we're saving money, we're actually bringing spending back down to what the budget affords. And last year, when we met, I think we reported a number of a hundred and fifty million dollars in expenses that was not included in our budget. So what we're really trying to do is bring those expenses down to meet the budget targets that, that we can afford.
Do you foresee H and H relying more on temporary nurses in the near future? And if so, why?
Less and less.
Less and less.
That's, I mean, we set a, a system goal again, get down to using registry only for unexpected absences.
I'm going to take you back a little bit, follow up in the indirect rate. For F Y twenty-four, how much did H and H return to the city? How much did it use for staff cost?
Yeah, we can provide you those numbers, that's, that's not a problem. But again, we, we don't, we don't take money that we don't need from the city. It, it's, the ten percent is a planning number. You know, obviously, we have expenses at Health and Hospitals, right, to implement the program and keep track of the expenses. Ten percent is a common number, but we, we can give you something more specific.
We have been joined by my colleague, Yuteris. Thank you, Jen, for being here. Be Heard peg in future reporting. In November and preliminary plans, be heard, receive a peg. During the November plan hearing, Budget Director Chiha stated that there weren't any more anticipated funding reduction to be heard. At what point was this funding reduction considered? Second, was this peg exclusively to pause the expansion or where the additional reason for why it was put in place?
Oh, conceptually, Chair, we believe in be heard. We believe that it is better to send a social worker to someone having a mental health crisis than a police officer. Having said that, the, the social workers that are on our budget are paired with an EMS person from fire department. And so our staffing will always reflect the number of fire department EMS personnel. And so when the city froze the number of increases to EMS at the fire, we, there would be no purpose of hiring the social worker because there's no EMS person for them to go out with. So right now, the be heard program is stable, it's not planned to increase, it's not planned to decrease. I hope someday the city does increase it because I think from a policy point of view, it's the right thing.
How much money would the expansion have cost? And what services would it have provided?
We can, we can provide you that number. As, as Dr. Katz had mentioned, it, it was really an alignment of our budget with the FIDNE budget. You know, the value of the peg, I think, was five to six million dollars. We can, we can make sure that that number is accurate.
In what locations would this expansion have taken place?
Again, remember, our role as Health and Hospitals is to provide the social workers. So I, I don't know the, the specific areas where the, the additional social workers were going to be paired to the EMS people, but I, I think that's learnable. We'll, we'll work with our fire department colleagues to find out what the expansion areas were planned to be.
So you never had that information?
Right. We, again, our role is if the city says we want, you know, to have thirty teams instead of twenty, we'll hire the social workers and train the social workers for those ten additional teams. But we don't determine where those teams go.
Got you. With the third round of pegs effectively canceled, can you, we anticipating the planned expansion of the programs to resume? If yes, will expansion focus on reaching more geographical areas or making the program twenty-four hours?
If the, if the city can go forward with the EMS expansion for be heard, we would be proud to provide and train the social workers.
Going back to that expansion focus, what about Department of Health? Does they have ideas of what?
Department of Health?
Is input in there?
For the be heard program.
Yeah.
I, I.
You have, you don't know?
I mean, I, I can't answer, but I mean, I, spiritually, I know they would support be heard. Right? We're, we're, we're all in favor of sending medical health professionals rather than police whenever possible.
Okay. How many people currently work in be heard? Do you know? And what is their vacancy rate?
Yeah, I, I think the current number is about thirty-nine staff. Thirty-nine.
But that's our staff.
Our staff, yeah.
That's thirty-nine social workers that we're providing.
Thirty-nine.
Right? That's not the people at the fire department EMS.
And do you know about the vacancy, the vacancy rate in there?
No, I don't.
To the best of my knowledge, we've filled all of the teams that are currently running.
Yeah.
Okay. In last year's preliminary plan hearing, you had mentioned an interest in adding indication for be heard in the mayor's management report in assessing the effectiveness of be heard services. Has there been any further discussion of this issue? Should we expect to see those indication in the M M R?
Yeah, there, there is definitely a evaluation going on, on the effectiveness of be heard, but it's not yet complete.
Because you know, a lot of people have question about be heard.
Yes.
Okay. Distress Hospital Fund. The state created the Distress Hospital Fund to support safety net hospitals that disproportionately treat Medicaid patients and populations. H and H is not saturally excluded from receiving funding due to their work with Medicaid populations. But based on determinate, I mean, determinations made by the State Commissioner of Health and the State Budget Director, H and H has not received any distress hospital funding. Did the state provide a specific reason for why H and H hospitals are excluded?
No.
Did you ask?
We try to work closely with the state. The state has made it clear that they have their own budget challenges and that there are a number of distressed hospitals in New York City and that it's a fixed pool. And so if they gave us more money, they would have to give less money to other hospitals. And many of those hospitals are in a more precarious financial position than Health and Hospitals, which has been doing pretty well of late.
And yet again, I want to say thank you because H and H is serving the underserved population. Part of New York City sales tax extended to fund this project. How much city funding is taken annually for the Distress Hospital Fund? Do you know?
Yeah, it's, it's currently at a hundred and fifty million dollars. But these are, I think, issues really that don't directly affect our budget, they're more of an O N B issue, but we do follow the discussions with the state. But a hundred and fifty million is, is the value.
How much funding would H and H Hospitals hypothetically receive if they were part of the fund?
Well, they're discretionary dollars as, and they're, they're funds that the city really, or the state decides how they want to allocate those funds. There's, there's no formula that I'm aware of, but we've yet to receive those dollars or any portion of them.
Okay. Now, coming back to sickle cell disease. The council held a hearing on September twentieth related to sickle cell disease. It's an pack on the city and evaluating access to sickle cell care in the city. It's unpacked on the city and evaluating access to sickle cell care in the city. The hearing introduced Local Law one sixty-three of twenty-twenty-three, which would establish guidance to improve health outcomes to individuals with sickle cell disease. What's the current status of sickle cell, uh, funding?
Uh, first, I just wanna commend you on, on that legislation.
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, uh, again, for, for everybody to understand how important your legislation is, there was a movement that was well-intentioned in the U.S. to decrease opioid use among people with chronic diseases, um, for good reason, and we saw many overdoses in New York City. But there was a failure to understand that sickle cell is not one of the diseases for which pain medication should be held. It is a chronic disease, but it's a chronic disease with acute exacerbations that have to be treated adequately with pain medication, very different than the diseases people were trying to help people to get off of, where the opioids are not particularly helpful because people are taking them every single day for months on end and those medications don't work. So much, I think, uh, is about working individually with patients. We don't have a set budget because, by disease, because we'll do whatever is necessary to care for any individual patient. And one of the most helpful things, um, that we've done is Kings County invited one of the patients to come and talk to them about her experiences in their emergency room and other emergency rooms around the city. And they together made a video, as a teaching video, to help, um, for practitioners to understand what it feels like to be in a pain crisis, what you're looking for in a pain crisis, how, what is good treatment by doctors and nurses, what is insulting treatment by doctors and nurses. And we're using that video throughout our system as a teaching tool. So, uh, we will provide whatever services people need. Kings County is one of our centers of excellence. Uh, there's also quite a lot of care provided to this population at Jacoby, at Harlem, um, at Bellevue. Uh, but all of our hospitals are used to providing good care for people with sickle cell disease.
So there's no specific funding?
We, we, we don't, uh, budget by illness. We always, the idea is that our job should be to meet every patient's needs, whatever their illness is.
Okay. Come back to, I'll come back to that. How much funding in, is in H and H fiscal twenty-twenty-five budget for sickle cell services?
Well, I guess a different way that we could go back and look at it is, uh, while we don't budget for any specific disease, it might be possible for us to look at our patient population with sickle cell and answer the question of how much we've spent.
Yes, I, I would say that we could do that. And as, as Dr. Katz mentioned, you know, and, and many of our patients have, you know, comorbidities, so it's not just sickle cell, it's coupled with something else. But we've been asked this question before. It's, it's been asked by the councils relates to behavioral health and we, we can take our best shot at, at developing a number, but you'd have to understand, we don't, we don't budget that way, but we can dig into the data and come up with our best estimate.
And, and if you or other members of city council or other people in the city family recognize holes where in our, uh, uh, care, we should, we will fill those holes. And that's why we don't budget by specific disease because we see ourselves as needing to fill whatever there is in terms of need of our patients. So if we need more of, you know, nurse educators over here, or we need more psychologists over there, that should be our job to meet the need of our patients, whatever they have.
Well, I do understand, Dr. Katz, but sickle cell disease have not been really addressed in New York City the way it's supposed to be for many, many, many decades. And it's, uh, mostly, um, black communities and people are really suffering. When the crisis hit, I used to work in the ER and I know how it looks like. I have two nieces with sickle cell disease and I'm a sickle cell trade. My daughter is a sickle cell trade. It's very important. I, I understand that we have to take care of everyone, but this one has been neglected for far too long.
Understood.
The bill will go into effect one year after it has been signed into law. Have you begun preparations for education process to guide medical professionals on sickle cell detection and treatment? Please describe what this process will look like.
Uh, yes, I mean, we, we have again, and again, we're, we're big fans of the bill. We like to believe that because of who we take care of, we are ahead of other hospitals. Um, and we'd be happy to provide the training materials that we're using to you.
Because from my understanding, even from nursing school, we don't have that much of talking about sickle cell disease, probably one hour. And in medical school, from my understanding, since I have two doctors in my life, not that much either. But we talk about any other diseases, but not sickle cell disease much. Which H and H facilities provide pre and post-conception genetic testing for sickle cell disease? If it is not yet available, when do you expect these services to be available at H and H facilities?
Uh, we provide them at all of our facilities currently. All of our hospital facilities.
All the hospitals?
Right, so the, someone would have to, for some of those services, if they were at a Gotham clinic, they would need to be referred to the hospital. But that, that's typical. We do that for all sorts of things. Uh, primary care clinics were not meant to be full-service, uh, operations.
What is the expected cost of including these services at all H and H facilities?
Well, here too, we'd have to do a, a run to find out, but we don't, we're not limited by dollars.
Right.
Uh, is, and again, this is a very important part of our mission, is that we don't limit needed services. Uh, we have no rationing of any kind of service in health and hospitals. If, if it's medically needed, we medically provide it. If we, if ever our needs exceed our budget, it's our job to advocate for a sufficient budget to meet the need.
Okay, so I'm expecting you to fight for sickle cell disease more?
Yes.
Because, um, it's a special approach for sickle cell, unlike for the other diseases. It's very special. Um, what is the current timeline for planning and implementation of this bill?
We're, we're certainly gonna meet all, all of the timelines in the bill and have already started work, but that will be part of presenting you with the curriculum to show you the dates for the, for the different trainings.
Thank you. Um, now I'm gonna turn it over to my colleagues who asked a couple of questions. Um, Councilwoman, um, Shulman.
One second. Hello, Dr. Katz, it's always good to see you.
Nice to see you.
So I have a couple of questions, different topics. One is, I'm just gonna go back to the residents for a little bit. According to OLR and OMB's numbers provided to the union, they're budgeting approximately two-hundred-and-ninety-two million dollars over five years as the pension cost for the resident physician bargaining unit. Residents are only voluntarily enrolled in the pension plan and it takes five years to vest in the city pension, while most residency programs are three to four years long. Does H and H or the city pay into the city pension plan for residents and fellows at the rates OMB, OLR are budgeting for?
Yes, I, I would say that, that we do. Um, and, and certainly, you know, many of those residents, I think it's, it's, uh, it's attractive to have a pension and we would like many of those residents to stay on with us with a permanent job. So, uh, the answer to that is, is, is yes.
Okay, and, um, last year, Dr. Katz, during a preliminary budget hearing, you stated that residents are some of the lowest paid workers in hospitals when you look at pay per hour because of the hours they work. Has the situation changed for residents and taken into account inflation and other quest of living increases?
No, because there, there has not been a recent contract, so it would actually be a little worse this year.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you a couple of different things. One is about hospital bed utilization. So one of H and H's terms and conditions reviews bed utilization in all eleven H and H facilities. The bed utilization rate ranges between fifty-five and eighty-five percent. Metropolitan, so there's the low and the high. So the Metropolitan Hospital has fifty-five point two percent occupancy and Harlem Hospital has fifty-seven point five percent occupancy. What factors can affect the hospital's low occupancy rate?
Right, so it's, it's a good, good discussion for all of us to have because there's so many misconceptions. So let, let's talk about Metropolitan just for a minute since you raised it. Very valuable resource for, uh, the community, Spanish Harlem, very well-loved institution. Lots of four-bedrooms that are really not ideal for infection control, adequate privacy, um, but we don't take them off the license, um, because in times like COVID, you never quite know when you might need to use a space that you haven't previously used. So to me, what matters most in a hospital is the combination of physical space and staffing. So in your area, Queens Hospital and Elmhurst are landlocked. Like I have no, I can't open another ward in either place. Just don't have any physical space. Metropolitan, I have physical space, um, but it's not cheap to renovate four-bedroom rooms into appropriate, modern rooms. And it's not just the, 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 the fact that they're four-bedrooms. There are a variety of things, bathrooms in, you know, people do not expect to go to bathroom in the hall anymore, right? Fortunately, we've stopped that, although, you know, again, just so everybody understands, until we opened the Ruth Bader Ginsburg Hospital, South Brooklyn, then Coney Island had a ward with a bathroom in the hall. I mean, that's how it used to be. Um, but none of us think that's a good standard anymore. So, so we have rooms that don't have bathrooms, we have rooms that don't have all the gases. So for, for quick speed, if somebody gets sick, you wanna be able to immediately do, you know, oxygen or other necessary gases. And, and it is very expensive to renovate an existing hospital while you're using it. So if, the, 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 our licensed beds are not always a very good indicator. We don't staff Metropolitan for its licensed beds, we staff it for its fifty-five beds. Um, and then we look for opportunities to use it. So overall, the hospitals in our system, in the Queens two hospitals, as I said, the, there is no more physical space. The hospitals that are most crowded in terms of, um, over their historic census are Kings and, um, Bellevue, um, uh, where Councilmember Rivera was born. Um, the, uh, uh, and we think that that's related to recent hospital closures or diminishments. So Kingsborough closed in Brooklyn, um, and also University Hospital is not, has been diminished somewhat because of the physical plant. In the case of Bellevue, Beth Israel has been diminished, uh, because of physical plant issues. Those two hospitals are substantially over their pre-COVID census. Med is, is at their pre-COVID census. Uh, Jacoby is a little bit over their pre, uh, COVID census. Our other hospitals, Harlem, uh, uh, Wood Hall, South Brooklyn are pretty much at their pre-COVID census now.
So what hap, can I just ask a couple of questions? So what happens, um, you mentioned Kings County, so what happens if SUNY Downstate closes? Because they're almost at capacity.
Sure, so, I mean, we, we have already been talking to the states and, uh, we believe that, that Kings, um, and Bellevue, uh, need to do renovations. Unfortunately, both of those hospitals have physical space that could be renovated. Again, it's making the distinction between, say, Elmhurst, where I have nothing to renovate. Uh, every inch is taken.
Yeah.
In the case of Bellevue and Kings, with the, with the appropriate amount of money, I can renovate a ward at Kings to take another fifty to seventy patients if that becomes necessary and expand the ED. I need to do the same thing at, at Bellevue if we're going to, uh, if there's gonna be continued diminishment of Beth Israel.
So the last question I have is about Rest in Peace Medical Debt, which you're familiar with, the mayor's program to make sure that people who are in debt, um, have the ability to pay off their medical debts and all of that. My understanding is H and H is not part of that program. Is there a reason for that?
We are not part of it because we never, you know, sue patients.
But that's what I thought, but I just wanted to get on the record.
I mean, first, we're very, you know, sort of about never, trying never to send someone a bill that they can't pay to start with. Um, occasionally, it might happen because someone has not provided us any financial information and so we have just no idea.
Right.
But regardless, we don't sue, uh, we don't, uh, send people to court because of unpaid bills.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, my pleasure, Chair. Um, next is, um, Councilmember Rivera, born in Bellevue.
This is a great place, so what can I say? And my niece was born there, receiving excellent care. And I just wanna say, you know, Bellevue, um, my grandmother's going there for treatment for dementia and Alzheimer's and they've been absolutely wonderful. And my uncle just went for his first appointment at Kings, uh, for liver cancer treatment and they were just incredibly welcoming, so. I mean, besides the wait times. Well, you're working on that.
Working on that.
I have to say, they, only, only rave reviews. So, uh, uh, just a couple of things. I wanna follow up on a question asked earlier by the Chair regarding indirect rates paid, uh, for, for asylum seeker services. H and H included a fifteen percent indirect rate, but you said that it's a ten percent indirect rate? Does the current cost for asylum seeker services include a fifteen percent rate or ten percent rate built in for H and H?
Yeah, at, at one point in time, it may have been fifteen percent. We realized we didn't need fifteen percent and lowered it down to ten percent and we're reevaluating what we need today as we continue to downsize the program. But again, it's important to us, we're, we're grateful for the money when we can get it. If we don't need it, we, we return it.
And I, I would say, uh, for our board, it's important that we, we've assured them that our, uh, participation in the asylum seeker work was not meant to diminish healthcare for low-income people. And there is work, like each contract is a huge scope of work to the legal people, the contract people, the procurement people. And if we don't hire additional staff to do that work, then we would diminish healthcare services to do asylum seeker work. And part of the, the, the city arrangement, and OMB has been very good about this, was the idea that this was not our specific mission and so we would be held harmless. We don't, we're not trying to make a profit. If we don't have, if we don't have to hire the people, we don't hire the people. But if we do, we think that it's right for the cost of the asylum seeker work to be separate. And we, we also have always hoped that there would be another, there'd be an opportunity to get federal dollars, um, for that work. Um, and that by keeping it separate, the city would be able to say what it was costing. Because again, writing the contracts, doing the legal work is real work and otherwise the services don't happen.
Well, you mentioned vacancies. Do you know how many, and I know you spoke about this with, with the Chair, do you know how many vacant positions there are at H and H specifically for doctors?
So, uh, I don't have a number. It would be in the hundreds. But again, I'd say.
What, what's the plan to fill the slots?
Well, so just to, to explain, a fair amount of the, just because it's vacant doesn't mean the service isn't provided because we do sessional services. And I think many people appreciate the additional session because the city work week for a doctor is forty hours. Many doctors in outside practice work sixty hours. And people, because of New York, are happy to have the opportunity to work an additional twenty hours, um, and, you know, uh, earn additional salaries. So, uh, the, the issue is hiring. Um, what, generally, it is, it's almost impossible to recruit people to New York City because of the cost of housing. So if you're here already, right, then it's possible for us to hire you. Very hard and we, we lose people all of the time, uh, even at doctor salaries, uh, to people saying it's just too expensive to live here and the quality of life, especially people with young families, um, people have two children, um, very, very difficult. So we rely on sessional work.
Well, I just wanna mention, I know that, uh, when we asked about residents at the last hearing and about on-call coverage, it was said that in some spaces, um, a medical director would step in if a resident couldn't cover. So I'd love to hear about, uh, which programs have a protocol where a medical director or associate director, um, are pulled to cover residents who are out sick? And then, you know, in, in, in the spirit of paying people, ensuring that on-call coverage is treated like overtime. is treated like overtime, I think that's really, really important. And, and you, and you did mention Beth Israel, so you said you, you could open up space, I know that's one question, sorry, Madam Chair. The other question is, you said you were going to open up space, hopefully in Kings, for 50 to 70 patients. Are you thinking of opening up space in Bellevue to accommodate more patients because of Beth Israel and their impending closure, even though they have not been approved yet, despite their elimination of services slowly? How, how does that impact Bellevue's actual budget? And do you have estimates on expense for taking on additional beds in capacity?
Right.
And have they talked, and have they talked to you about this rule? Have they talked to you?
Yeah, so I'll try to do it all backwards.
Thank you, thank you.
So we, the way we budget is we budget for volume. So if a hospital has more patients, we need to provide more dollars. And fortunately, because we've gotten good at billing insurance companies, generally more dol- more patients come with more dollars, especially if you're not opening any more bricks and mortar. So a, a major concept of all hospital finance is the difference between a fixed cost and a variable cost. Bellevue has a fixed cost. It costs a certain amount to keep the lights on, keep the utilities, keep the administration to mop the floor. If I have more patients, then I provide only the variable costs, additional doctors, additional nurses, additional social workers. Generally, we can break even if I only have to have incremental costs. So I'm not concerned about so much with any of the hospitals where I have physical room to grow. I'm not concerned about the operating costs. I am very concerned, capital costs for Bellevue, because it's such an old building. It's extremely expensive. So it's, because it's so large, there is still room that's usable, but it's very expensive to rehabilitate. You know, on the order of, you know, a, a ward opening on, in Bellevue, depending on which one, could easily cost 40 or 50 million dollars to get it. Again, because it's at a, was built at a standard way different than what modern health care is requiring. So, you know, we, we are not, never in favor of hospital closures, right? We don't regulate, the city doesn't regulate hospital closures. It's a state issue. But I feel like my job is to make sure that none of my hospitals are ever overrun, which means being prepared for things that might happen. I think that if Bellevue has more patients, we, they will get more dollars, and that will help us. But I have to worry about how quickly the renovations can occur, how quickly I can staff up. And these are all challenging issues. One coming on, on the previous, just to be honest, and doctors cannot earn overtime, not literal overtime, they are FSLA exempt. So doctors get sessional rates, which means we determine what is the rate by which we pay for an additional eight hours in the hospital, or additional eight hours of phone call. It's all set up according to specialty and what type of call you get.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I understand, I just want to make sure that they receive the compensation that they deserve. And so thank you, Madam Chair, for the time.
Not a problem, Chair of Hospital, former Chair of Hospital, so you get into it.
I appreciate you.
Majority Whip, Selvina Powers. Books, Powers.
Hi, Dr. Katz. Always good to see you.
Nice to see you. Same.
Just two really quick questions. First, last year, Health &amp; Hospital announced a $30 million investment in a new Gotham Health Center in the Rockaways. Can you talk about what the timeline is for completion of the health center and when it will be operational and ready to receive patients?
January 26. But to, to your fellow council members, I just want to commend you, Majority Whip, for having done a really beautiful process in the Rockaways with the community to look at how we can provide trauma care. And we heard over and over again from a wide variety of community members how much they wanted trauma care, what the harms of not having trauma care. I was very pleased the council member took me and a bunch of community people in a van, and we went and looked at a variety of sites. And I really liked the idea, and I thought that more health care planning should be done with community people in a van, looking at different sites. And we, the best moment, and I think the Majority Whip would be too humble to tell you, was she was out, we were, we were near the ocean, we ran into some community constituents, and they were asking what we were doing there. And she said, well, we're trying to figure out what is most needed in this area in health services. What do you think? And he says, without missing a beat, trauma care. And it was the most amazing sort of affirmation, right? We're, we're just like walking along, and he's there with his dog and a family member. But sort of, there's no replacement for listening to constituents, and I really admire the way you did the process.
Thank you for that, Dr. Katz. And with your help and under the leadership of our hospital's chair, I know we will be successful. So it's not if, but when we will secure a Level 1 or 2 trauma facility in Rockaway. My last question for you is, can you update us on the status of the contract negotiations with the Doctors Council SEIU? We want to ensure safe levels of staffing and work conditions for our health care workers providing care to New Yorkers. And I know you and I talk all the time in terms of the staff at Health &amp; Hospital, and you've always been tremendously compassionate to the staff, so just wanted to understand the update there.
Right, right. Well, as you know, you know, happy doctors and nurses make happy patients. It's a very simple formula. And if, if your doctors and nurses are not happy with your system, they are not going to deliver the best care. So we are very much in negotiations. It is, the, the, a doctors' union is a complicated one because it's separate negotiations with the city for the city-employed doctors, Mount Sinai for the Mount Sinai-employed doctors, NYU for the NYU-employed doctors, and PAGNY for the PAGNY-employed doctors. So it's, it's, it's really a sort of simulcast of, these are all doctors who work for us but in four different systems. So it's not easy to resolve. The goal is fair compensation, equity across our sites. And, you know, I, I'm very optimistic that we will be able to achieve it. We have a, a great group of doctors. I love if you, you know, see our doctors. We're the only system where the doctors actually look like our patients. Many of them have incredibly inspiring immigrant stories of going with their parents, serving as translators as little children, and it's something we would never allow anymore. But, you know, people who made a commitment that, you know, when I grow up, I'm going to become a doctor. And we, we had a, we did a profile recently of one of our doctors who never thought she would be a surgeon, but learned to sew with her grandmother in India. And when she, because she had learned how to do this fine stitching when she was in the OR, the surgeons were just amazed at her ability as a medical student to stitch things up, because of course, it's really the same skill. And she would, they told her, you should become a surgeon. And she became a surgeon and works in our system. So we're very proud of the doctors that we have, and we're committed to fair and equitable salaries for them.
Thank you so much, Dr. Katz.
Thank you, Chair. Before I pass it on to my colleagues, I want to piggyback on what you started. Do you believe the lack of pay increase since 2020 is impacting residents' moral and H&amp;H's ability to result in retaining physicians, especially those who come from the communities H&amp;H serves?
I think, I think so. I think it would be in the city's interest to, you know, always not let contracts lag too far. But, you know, again, you, you know better than anyone, this is a complex city. OLR has a lot of unions that it needs to come to agreement. There is a specific cycle, and it does seem like this one sort of fell out of the cycle, right? We have other contracts that just expired a few months ago. So I think part of it is when you do pattern bargaining, some contracts are going to have just run out, and some would have run out longer ago. But I think the important part is, and I, I see the consensus across the table, we're going to get this resolved.
Yeah. And it's a city town, and we're proud of that, too. Now I'll pass it to my colleagues, Mammarada, for a question.
Thank you, Chair. So the most interesting thing that you said today to me, and what I got from this whole hearing, is listen to your constituents. My constituents spoke to you, and you did not listen to them as far as housing needs or concern in my community. So last week, we met with your residents, and it's very disheartening to hear how they were overworked, they had financial concerns, and they were very concerned about the lack of housing. There's plenty of housing on the Jacoby campus. Why is there no housing for your residents?
You know, I think the city at one time did housing for nurses and residents. It's a model that, you know, I would support. I would also support, you know, vouchersing if the city does not want to be in the business of being a landlord. I think that was part of why historically, most cities stopped doing their own housing. So you could do it either way. You could build your own housing, or you could stipend people into housing.
So if you don't, if the city doesn't want to be a landlord, why are we providing housing on the Jacoby campus?
I mean, if you're talking about the Just Home Project, as you know, this, this city council specifically gave us a million dollars a year for the Just Home Project. So I understand that people may not support it now, or they may support it now, but this was a city council mayor's office directive that came with funding specifically for creating the project. So, you know, my view is, and it fits the same as asylum seekers, we're part of the city family. If the city council wants us to do a program like Just Home, we'll do it. If the city council does not want us to do a program like Just Home, we will not do it. We, we are here to serve. I realize on complex issues, different people have different views, different constituents have different views.
Right.
This is the process.
Listen to your constituents, and the constituents have spoken in the, in the community and in the district. So it's, it's unfortunate that you were kind of not absorbing and taking in what they were voicing to your, your board. Now, you do have two projects coming to the Jacoby campus. One will be housing for residents of Montefiore, not Jacoby residents. And there is another site that's going to be rezoned, and I was just wondering if you can provide any information as to what that, that site's going to turn into, what the building is going to look like? Will it be commercial? Will it be residential?
I don't know. I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't have a, I don't have a sense.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, CM. And before I move to Jen Gutierrez, our council member, I want to say I'm still waiting for a center, medical center in my community, the 46th District.
I think we have a few suggestions for you.
Listen to my constituents, too. Because we don't have any, any hospital, no hospital, no centers. Gutierrez?
Oh, thank you, Chair. Good to see you all again. How you doing, Dr. Katz? I have a couple of questions. I loved, I love the story you shared about, you know, homegrown medical team. We heard at last week's hearing, we heard a really great story from one of the residents that testified, Dr. Jordan, who said she grew up here, went to public housing, the first time she left public housing was to go away to school. And it was really rewarding. My sister, also an example of that, was a resident at SUNY Downstate and Kings County, born at Elmhurst. These are all really, really important stories and really valuable experiences to highlight, but I find it problematic, Dr. Katz, that they have very little incentive to continue to, to stay in our safety net hospitals, in our H&amp;H hospitals. I mean, we heard firsthand from them a myriad of reasons why their jobs, outside of the obvious stress factors and, and scheduling, but we heard things from pay parity being tough. We heard things from issues of, of access to ride shares, working late hours. And I'm particularly concerned about the, the residents at Elmhurst. You know, we were all supportive of their, of their strike and their fight for pay parity last year. And so I just want to get confirmation, because I don't want to, I don't want to misquote anything, but is it, is it correct that starting next academic year, all incoming interns for Elmhurst and Queens Hospital will now be employed by H&amp;H?
Yes.
H&amp;H, okay.
Uh, the, well.
Because they were Mount Sinai.
Yes, I'm not sure what the start date is. Not this July.
Okay, 2025.
I think it's one more year.
Okay. Great, thank you.
But I'm not 100, I'll have to check, which, it's definitely moving, but I'm not sure whether it's July 1/24 or July 1/25.
Okay, they're, so they're, they're no longer employed by Mount Sinai?
They will no longer be employed by Mount Sinai.
Depending on when that start time is.
Correct.
And so what is going, are they expected to receive the same first-year salary that was negotiated with Mount Sinai of $81,000 by 20, 81, 207?
Once they move, they would have to receive whatever salary the city negotiated for CIR, right? I wouldn't be able to pay a differential rate for a city resident who was at Elmhurst versus a city resident at Wood Hall. It's, it would all be one rate. And that's, I think, the reason it's set for 25 and not 24.
Okay. Do you know what that rate is?
No, that's the rate we're, we're all talking about, that we want. The city is, is way behind on that particular negotiation. And so once it's approved, there'll be a retro payment, and people will be brought up to some salary, but that salary is not yet negotiated.
Okay. Okay. Well, I just want to elevate their whole, their whole mission last year of wanting to get a little bit closer to, to pay parity. I, I understand what you're saying, so please keep us posted. Can I ask just one more question, Chair? I just want to now skip to the therapeutic, therapeutic unit, particularly in Wood Hall. Late last year, we had a joint hearing, and, and I'm sorry if I missed this in your opening statement, I was a little late, but I'm particularly interested in just getting a finite timeline, if you can, regarding Wood Hall. I know that from the questions and from the notes, there were some commitments of the therapeutic units being completed by 2024. And I believe now that that's, that's pushed back. So I just want to know if you can confirm that, and what are some of the, the delays, barriers that you're facing that's pushing this timeline back?
So just to make sure I'm answering the right question, you mean the outposted units?
Yes.
Okay, so I was very pleased to see the announcement yesterday by the mayor in collaboration with the city council that the outposting units are going forward. So up until yesterday's announcement, the decision had been that Bellevue was going forward, but we were stopped for the construction of the outposted units for Bellevue and North Central Bronx. And with yesterday's announcement, it goes forward. Now, let's see if Dr. Yang can answer the question of what, what is a realistic date now that we're restarting?
Sure. Thank you, Patsy Yang. For, for Wood Hall, the goal here is if we are able to finalize design for those outposted units by the summer of 2024 and issue a request, a solicitation for the construction bids by late summer or early autumn. The idea is to, the hope is that we'll complete construction by the summer of 2027.
Okay, and I'm sorry, and, and Wood Hall was approved prior to yesterday's announcement?
Wood Hall is part of the approval yesterday to proceed.
Okay.
We have been doing work at Wood Hall in preparation for that. As, as you know, we've, we've moved and renovated and upgraded many of the units, pediatric unit, substance use unit, some of the administrative and resident areas. And we're into phase two of that work as a prerequisite for the outposted work.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. And we're moving on to my colleague, Palladino, that has, CM, have a question.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to meet you.
Nice to see you.
Absolute pleasure. It's my first time serving on this committee. So I think what struck me the most was your reality, when you dealt with what's really going on in the hospitals, and the way in which you have to cover pay and costs and everything that it takes to run a building as old as Bellevue. How old is that, 200 years old?
Well, the, you know, the Bellevue.
No, I'm not kidding, it was built like in the early 1800s.
She's right.
Yes.
Created prior to the signing of the Declaration of Independence. At the site of City Hall was the original, and then moved to its current location. Different parts, I don't think any functional part is now 200 years old, but certainly 150 years old.
Because I'm a bit of a history buff, and I love old structures, and I study architecture and all of that. But getting back, I'm going to just go back to something. Salaries. When we were talking about salaries earlier, you said that we all know what the residents make. They make sixty-seven and change. The doctors and the nurses in residents, what do they make?
Well, of course, it depends. So the nurses with the new contract, I think, averaged just over a hundred thousand dollars for a starting nurse. More with, depending upon what certifications and number of years. Physician salaries can vary tremendously. From what I am, I'm a primary care doctor, primary care doctors tend to earn the lowest, which usually some of our physicians might be like one eighty to two twenty.
That's why everybody became specialists.
But a-
Used to go to a G C.
A cardiac thoracic surgeon might be nine hundred thousand.
No, the reason why I'm asking is because you said so many people leave New York because of the cost of living. And if you're making that kind of money, that's pretty, that's, that's a good living.
Right.
And why don't they stay?
So I actually said that it's hard to recruit into New York.
That's fair.
As opposed to leave. I feel like people who, who like us, who grew up, I grew up in Brooklyn, right?
We're not going anywhere.
New York is, you know, my hometown, right? I'm here.
Correct.
What we find is when you tell somebody who's in Ohio as a doctor and lives in a four-bedroom house and with yard all around, that you'd like them to move in with their two children to the two-bedroom apartment.
Well, happy you and I talk the same language, very plain, very clear, and deal only with reality. And that, and that's what the reality sadly is. I also, you know, I'm curious because we have a lot of, I come from District 19 and it's not my, it's my neighbor's district. But we have some, you used to have Parsons Hospital there. We have Flushing Hospital there. If you may give me just a couple of minutes. These buildings, and I know of several other buildings, I know Elmhurst is very tight. Are you looking to like go into these buildings that have once been used as a hospital? That have since been boarded up for a great many years? I was born in Flushing Hospital and my nieces were born, the whole family was born in Parsons Hospital. Is there any way in which to increase the volume and the bed space that you would be interested in looking at any of these spaces?
Depends on the state that they're in. One useful piece of data is that SUNY said that it would cost three billion dollars to build
Three billion? Where to be?
A new university hospital, but four billion to fix the existing building.
Amazing.
Which is just a way of saying hospitals are so highly regulated that they can be incredibly expensive to renovate with the sad fact. And I think that's why a lot of hospital building conversions go to housing. Because you, the housing at least allows you to keep more of the existing thing. And it's just very difficult with the, the cabling that you need for the wifi in order for the systems to work, the, the gases, it just becomes almost prohibitive to rehab. Which is a shame because old buildings have a value.
That's exactly right.
But, but I think that the reality is generally new is cheaper to build.
And hearing that Beth Israel, which I just learned last week, was going to be closing, that, that took me quite by surprise as well.
They say that it's also a lot influenced by building failure. That these are buildings that were built in the 1960s and that they don't function with modern hospital protocols anymore.
And it's not reasonable to try to take a hospital such as Beth Israel and just refurbish what needs to be done? I mean, we don't see the, the court, we, this city operates on a hundred, over a hundred billion dollars. And we're looking at what we need most, which is care.
Yes.
And it's just getting worse and worse. And yet we cannot find the money to do what we need to do to a building like Beth Israel. I don't understand that. I mean, that's another historic hospital.
Right.
You know, and I understand it takes billions to do what we need to do, but why not? It boggles my brain whenever I go to these things. Because I keep seeing, for example, I was just in a, a meeting earlier, a government ops, where I learned that security guards that are in our migrant centers are getting paid as high as a hundred and nineteen dollars an hour. Yeah, I did the same thing. Could not believe my ears. They are being hired by private security companies and-
CM?
Yeah, what's that?
Can we focus on that?
What?
I said, can you wrap it up for me, please?
I can wrap it up, but I'm just saying, when you take that kind of money and you're applying it to a security guard and you're not paying a resident, you understand that, I mean, sixty-seven thousand to a hundred and nineteen, it just boggles my brain.
Understood.
So I, I'd like to talk to you about something else later in private if I could. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, CM. We're going to go to Bellevue Bariatric Surgery. On February 7, 2024, the Committee on Criminal Justice and Hospitals sent a letter. We sent a letter to Bellevue administrators in regard to their bariatric surgery practices. In the letter, the committee's requested information on the number of surgeries, the policies governing the recruitment and performance of the bariatric surgeries, the follow-up care for patients who have undergone bariatric surgeries, the recruitment of bariatric surgery patients for Rikers Island, the financial incentives surrounding the surgeries, and the accreditation process for Bellevue Hospital Center for Obesity and Weight Management. Do you have any updates on whether administrators have been able to collect the information requested by the committee chair? Cheers, I should say, me and her.
Yes, Madam Chair. So we now have, the, the letter was, was approved and released yesterday or today, this morning.
Yes.
I have it here. I hope you have it. If not, I have, I have copies.
You have copies for me, for my own letter. Good, go ahead.
So I, I just would like to say, you know, as a, as a clinician, I, I care for many people with diabetes, hypertension. And many of them suffer from obesity at levels that, that they cannot control. And you talk to them, it's can be heartbreaking. People say, I eat almost nothing. And I say, it's not your fault. Your body just happens to be really good at pulling every calorie out of what you eat. And people reach a point where they cannot lose weight because their weight prevents them from moving very much. Because their knees begin to hurt, their feet begin to hurt. So they become less and less active and then use fewer and fewer calories. And bariatric surgery has been found to be life-threatening. And I, and I think many people found the New York Times articles insulting. That they basically seem to say, look, you're poor, what are you doing with getting this, you know, surgery for body stuff? You know, that's, you know, that's superfluous, you know, that, you know, Bellevue should be, you know, handling trauma care. Without realizing that, that this is life-threatening.
It is life-threatening?
Life-threatening when people, you know, have BMI's, Body Mass Index of forty-five and have sugars that are out of control and hypertension that, that isn't controlled by multiple medications. And many of the charges, like the idea that a surgeon would be paid for productivity, that's American medicine. All of American medicine is based on productivity. There's nothing nefarious about productivity. There were criticisms of the idea that patients who were in the criminal justice system would get bariatric surgery. But again, our whole goal is to provide a single standard of care to people. We don't, we don't go around saying, I'm sorry, you're in the criminal justice system and we're not therefore going to provide life-saving treatment. There was criticism that we didn't require the same number of visits as the private systems. Well, you know what? The private systems get paid for each of those visits. Those visits are money-making. On the other hand, my patients often don't have sick leave. If I tell them that they have to come for nine appointments before their surgery, it's a non-starter. They won't be able to comply. So yes, we've created a program that was designed to meet the needs. Everyone did not have a perfect outcome because that's bariatric surgery. It is life-saving. Sometimes it doesn't work. Sometimes people still are able to consume enough calories. But our numbers are as good as anyone's. And I really think that it was a sort of misunderstanding of what it's like to be poor. And what it's like to, you know, have people not really recognize how serious a problem obesity is for people. So we, we are undefen, we, we don't feel defensive at all about this issue in the sense of this is not to me, you know, something that anybody needs to apologize about. We, we want to be transparent. We want everybody to see the data. But we don't see anything that requires us to say, you know, we're sorry or we did the wrong thing. We, we stand by the outcomes of the program and we stand by the right of low-income people who are seriously obese. And we're not, we're not talking about people who want to look better in their summer swimsuit. We're talking about people who have uncontrolled diabetes or hypertension or heart disease because of their obesity. So we're happy that the letter got released and happy to provide anyone with information and transparency about the program.
And it's preventive care. It's cost-effective.
It is preventive care.
As a nurse, I focus on preventive care. This is preventive care. But when you let someone's obese and then life-threatening, hypertension, heart disease, cardiac arrest, when they come to the hospital, you put them in ventilator, that's a lot of more money than doing a surgery and trying to get the person to live, you know, a healthier life. And it should not be about money. It's a right for everyone to have healthcare. Does a hospital receive funding based on the number of bariatric surgeries that are performed? And if so, where does the funding come from and what is the money allocated toward?
For bariatric surgery, it says we do everything that we do. We, we bill insurance and we try very hard to collect from insurance, not from individual people. And the money goes to the overall pool of services that we provide. So again, we've never, we've never set specific dollar to a specific service. Another way of, of looking at the importance is not all our hospitals have equal percentages of, of private payers. Some of our hospitals have more private payers, some of our hospitals have fewer. We don't want to provide more care at the hospitals that have better insurance. We want to provide the same care to everybody. And so for that, it's important that all of the revenue we collect goes back into the money. And then we distribute it by volume. You have more patients, we're going to send more money to your hospital. Right? It all follows a formula of X patients equals X nurses, equal X doctors, equal X medications. And it should all be based on what people's actual needs are.
Thank you. Mental health services. Suicide is currently the leading cause of death for male residents and the second leading cause of death for female residents. H and H testified that they have taken strides to increase access to mental health support for residents such as resident wellness, I mean, work groups, dedicated spaces and retreats, and Helping Healers Heal program. Does H and H have a schedule on how often mental health resources are offered to residents? And second, how many residents take part in each program?
I don't think we have that information. I have to figure out, obviously, sometimes people seek out help without telling anyone. And we would support that, right? We would support anonymous seeking of help. So I can find out Helping Healers Heal does track contacts. I don't know if they track contacts separately by residents. Do you know, John?
No, I've been told that the privacy is, is a major issue and it could be a barrier if we have too much tracking.
So we've, we've tried to not track too closely who in our system seeks care. So that nobody, because remember, numbers could get small. Even if you, even if you said no names, if you said two people at, two residents at Woodhall sought care, I think people would wonder, well, which two sought the care? So we've tried to not enumerate. And we, we want, we want people to feel that they can go as often as they want, that they can seek as much care. And also that, that they should seek the care they want. So some people want to talk to a peer, some people want to talk to a psychologist or a psychiatrist. We try to say both are good. We're not, we're not, sometimes people want to talk to their program director. I mean, there, there's someone who went through residency. It's a difficult thing. It was difficult when I did it, it's difficult now. It's a, it's a very stressful time in people's lives for a variety of reasons. And our, our, we're never going to succeed in making it not stressful. Our job has to be to be able to meet people when they're feeling stressed and prevent suicide so that people never feel that that's the only choice that they have.
I, I'm still, I understand what you're saying about privacy and stuff. But I'm saying like if, is the program is being used or not actively? Because like I say, we have a program and nobody goes in their room at all. Is that being effective things? That's what I was just reflecting on. How does H and H offer additional support to residents that may need outside counseling of requests leave? What additional options do residents have to seek mental health care needs?
Well, all of our residents do have health insurance. So they would be able to seek care. And, and I think that's also important because that they can seek without us knowing anything about it. Which is an important feature. So again, people differ. Some people want to go talk to their program director. Some people want their program director to have no idea that they're struggling. And our system should allow for both. The, we thought that the Helping Healers Heal was nice because that's a third model. That's not your supervisor, that's not your doctor, that's your peer. And sometimes a peer is the only one can, who can assure you, yes, I felt the same way. Or yes, I, I, I feel bad in that kind of way as well. So again, our job is to provide as many choices as possible. I'm sure there will always be people who take advantage and people who should take advantage but don't. All we can do is try to make it as stigma-free as possible.
Thank you. It shows the stigma. Has there been a partnership with other mental health facilities to support residents needing more support or medications? What percentage of the health and hospitals budget goes towards supporting resident and nurses with mental health care needs?
Well, again, probably the largest portion is people get through their health insurance. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to track that. Health and Healers is a peer program. So we don't, we don't pay specifically. And, you know, I think people wouldn't like it as much if it was a paid program. They want to feel that they're talking to a peer who's volunteering based on similar types of experiences. The program directors, which people also go, is sort of baked into the budget for residency. So I don't think we have a separate dollar figure.
Not a specific number, right.
You have separate judges. Okay. To follow up on your question regarding the Helping Healers Heal program staffing from the recent hearing on residents, can you please provide the number of staff along with their title and responsibility who run and coordinate the program at each hospitals?
Yes, that we can provide. We can provide the administrative head and we can provide the numbers and the, the different professions. So some are doctors, some are nurses, some are social workers, some may be E V S workers. Right? It's open to anyone to, to volunteer.
The well-being of our resident. In addition to the concerns I mentioned earlier, residents have additional concerns about their housing and food. Many residents struggle with fighting affordable housing or caring for their families. What type of housing is provided for H and H residents? I think I overheard you talking about.
Unfortunately, that, that era passed. We're not currently doing any housing for doctors or nurses. And again, when it's, you know, I mean, it's a broader policy issue for the city. When I've raised it before, I think most of the housing people have thought a voucher system taking advantage of existing stock would be more efficient. taking advantage of existing stock would be more efficient. But, you know, I, I'm not a housing expert.
Okay. I think a housing, you don't think housing will be helpful? Because the complaint I'm hearing a lot, because some other countries, I think, try to help out with residents and nurses and doctors to make sure that they can have the staffs.
Yeah, and again, so for example, N Y U provides a lot of on camp. Well, they don't have a campus, but they own a lot of buildings. And they, they rent them out. I, I think the question for the city is, city is landlord. Does the city want to be landlord for those buildings? Or does the city want to voucher people into things? And that, that's what I'm not, again, I'm not the right person to answer the question. I think you can accomplish the goal. Either you can give someone a voucher and say, here's a voucher toward finding housing. Because what people are complaining about is the lack of affordability. Right?
Yep.
So a voucher solves the lack of affordability. Whether the city wants to be a landlord for nurses or residents, I, I can argue both sides of it. But I don't think I'm the, the right person to make the decision.
Thank you for the effort of giving me some of your thought or your opinion. What are restrictions are there for who? Oh, no, you don't have any. You don't have any of this because I want that. Okay, let's come to, to the food vouchers. Do H and H residents receive food vouchers? If so, how much money do they receive daily or weekly for food?
It depends greatly on the program and even the, the usually, the, it's not a daily. It's an amount different when you're on call from the amounts on a regular day. So if you're sort of having a regular day, the amount you're going to get is very different than if you're overnight. And each program is currently different. And they all work on voucher systems rather than sadly, the, the age that you and I trained in, where there is a hospital cafeteria, no more hospital cafeterias. I know, it's really, it was a, and it was a nice, doctors and nurses would hang out together. It was a social thing, it was a dating thing.
Oh, no, I didn't say dating.
It no longer.
I didn't say yesterday dating, I said yesterday, everything else. Okay, go ahead.
It didn't, it doesn't, there's no social center to hospitals anymore. There are no cafeterias.
Yeah.
It's all gone.
That was a fun thing.
I know, it's terrible.
She's a social worker, so she used to be around.
But we, the people do get vouchers. And we try to maintain some selection of healthy food at the hospitals.
That's a tough front for me. They receive discount for meals, the purchase in their hospital, but you don't have no cafeteria.
Right, they get vouchers.
They get vouchers to go. And you cannot tell me the actual vouchers, is it based on programs?
Based on program, based on what your shift is.
Okay, I'm shocked with that cafeteria thing, so I cannot go over it. But when, because foods are so expensive. Because I heard one of the resident testify. After he finished paying his rent, he didn't have money to buy food. And then he went to the hospital and got a sandwich that labeled just restricted for patient. And he took one, knowing it's for patient because he was hungry. So we should not have our resident in that situation. It bothers me.
I totally agree. But I think that's why we all want a fair resolution to the resident contract.
Okay. I can ask you about cafeteria, I had so many questions around cafeterias. What time and everything, okay. Vacancies. Residencies, residencies are notoriously difficult to get into. New York City residencies are among the most competitive because so many students want to practice here. Despite this, there are still vacancies in residency position of at H and H. There, I mean, there were eighteen vacant resident position in twenty twenty-three. Can you elaborate on how this happens? And even with the last minute scrambling to match students with empty residency? Because we know they need that spot.
Right, so even with the scramble, remember that we have hundreds of hundreds of, watching more in the thousands. So eighteen is a pretty small number. You can have mismatch. So you can have a residency that nobody, that there, you have people who want, say, a surgical residency. And they didn't match, they're looking, but what you have is pathology.
Got it.
Or psych. And they, they're not interested in that. So, so you do your best, but I think eighteen is pretty good for a system our size. Because you're never going to get a hundred percent. Also, of course, we have standards. And there are people who graduate from medical school who have terrible recommendations. If we read that someone would not, did not have a history of being nice to their patients in medical school, we would not accept them even if we had a vacancy. So it, it'll never be a hundred percent. We, we want programs to maintain standards. We don't want them to say, okay, well, you're, you're, you have a pulse, come join us.
So it's a process that prevented from.
It's a process, right.
Yeah, my son said I brainwash him to become an orthopedic surgeon, like he was good soaring with my grandmother. So now he should be telling me, thank you, right?
Yes, I, I hope he's a grateful son.
What step will H and H take to lower this number to zero vacancy residents?
I don't think it's realistic for it to be zero.
It's not realistic.
I don't think that's realistic.
Okay. Have you spoken recent with the state to see if they will include H and H hospital in the fund in the future?
Well, I mean, I, I talked to the state about the importance of both health and hospitals being financially viable and the other safety nets being viable. Because as we've talked about, if, if other hospitals close, it has a negative impact on us. So, you know, my job, I feel, is to advocate for all New Yorkers to get the care, whether it's with us or them. So I've never, I've never said to them, you know, you must give the money to us instead of from somewhere, another hospital that might need it a little bit more than we do. So, I mean, I, I want to always keep us whole. And again, you know, especially due to John's work, you know, our finances have been pretty good. I mean, we've, we've basically, through successful billing of insurance, have brought in $2 billion more in the last six years on a year-to-year basis. So, you know, we, we're, the, the state tends to look to us to teach other hospitals how to be financially viable.
You better, you're a better man than many. Many people will say, give me, give me, give me, give me, give me. But you understand we're having a crisis and we're counting on H and H. And you're doing a great job with that. Covid nineteen. The Covid nineteen pandemic still affects our healthcare system and especially affects our hospital. It is important that we ensure that there are adequate preventive products for, I mean, to Covid nineteen transmission to ensure that patients and medical professionals don't get sick. Does H and H provide free masks for all healthcare practitioners and patient? What type of mask are provided? Do you have different sizing options for people that won't fit in a standard mask comfortably, such as children?
Ye- yes to all, and, and as an addition, also to visitors.
For visitors, yeah.
Provide, you know, free masks. And we have everything from surgical masks to N ninety-five masks. The practitioner gets to decide what kind of mask. And we do fit, we have pediatric sizes. Also, many women's faces require for an N ninety-five, a different sized mask. And we have the various sizes.
Is it in the budget to distribute masks to the general public?
We don't have a, a specific distribution program. It's been done in the city by, primarily by D C A S and by our sister agency, D O H M H. But when there's been a crisis, like when we had the bad air, we, we were part of giving masks. So we're not, we're not part of the regular process. But if there were an emergency, of course, we would respond and, and give the masks that we have.
So you don't have a set aside money for that?
No, because it's done by D C A S and D O H M H.
Do you supply hand sanitizer to healthcare practitioners and patients?
Yes.
How do you keep track of which areas in the hospital require more hand sanitizers?
It's environmental services, they're in charge of that.
Is there adequate funding allocated for budget for the distribution of tests? If yes, how much money does this cost?
So just like all other things, we don't track specific Covid tests that we do in the emergency room. Right? So we consider it part of standard of care. We are no longer part of the distribution of home tests, which we once were. That's being done by the sister departments. All, all the supplies that we bought during the Covid pandemic have, have either expired or have been distributed.
Thank you. Now I'm going to ask you for one of my bill. Introduction ten twenty, twenty twenty-three, sponsored by me. Six to establish a website for New Yorkers to request free Covid nineteen rapid antigen tests and personal protective equipment. Do you have funding in the budget to officiate this policy?
I think first is a great idea. I do know that there are tests available, because I recently did for a constituent at, the library still have as a distribution site. Firehouses have masks from the, the last bad air. But we, we are not, again, I think this is more, at this point, a D O H M H, D C A S initiative. Because it's, it's all population based. But if people run out, we will always be available to give whatever the city needs.
Do you have the budgetary logistical means to distribute educational materials to the public in the event that there is an uptick in cases or surge of new infectious diseases?
We would certainly do it with D O H M H. I see them as the, the lead on public information campaigns around infectious disease.
Okay, thank you. Medicaid transfer and reimbursement. H and H received one hundred and forty-five million dollars from H R A in the fiscal twenty twenty-five preliminary plan through an intra-city transfer. This additional funding is a baseline starting in fiscal twenty twenty-four and is part of a routine transfer of Medicaid initiated funds. Can you provide additional information on these initiatives?
This is part of the matching of Medicaid. There has to be a local match. And H R A is the, the part of the city that does this scope of work. They provide the match that then goes up to the federal government and brings down Medicaid services.
So what services will H and H provide with this funding? If and how will this services assist H R A?
So the money goes to the federal government, gets matched, and it's how the federal government reimburses us for all Medicaid services. So it's any, any service that is paid for through Medicaid.
Okay. It goes to Medicaid. In H R A's expense and revenue charts, they outlined that H and H projects a decrease of nearly ninety million dollars in Medicaid revenue. Can you elaborate more on this decrease? What impact will an increase in Medicaid reimbursement have on this revenue?
Yeah, I'll say, this is an adjustment that pertains to the H and H budget. We know that as we're looking forward to F Y twenty-five, we've done very well with our risk pools. Those are capitated payments that we receive from Metro Plus and Health First. And what we're anticipating in the budget, that there will be a decline in the number of members, people participating because of the Medicaid research process. So it's just, we're anticipating there'll be less revenue coming to health and hospitals. And that's, that's the adjustment.
Okay. H and H strives to provide great services to all New Yorkers and aims to have their hospital be locations that patient can rely on consistently. What foremost quality assurance does H and H have to lower potential cases of medical malpractice or negligence?
We have a very robust plan that includes our board, the quality improvement for cases that are seen throughout the system. Each hospital and clinic has a quality improvement director. You know, as long as healthcare is done by humans, or maybe even if it's not done by humans. There will always be, you know, things that don't go the way you want them to go. Nobody's perfect. But we strive to, you know, to provide the right care every time. And there have been, you know, some major initiatives, including timeouts in the surgical field, which, you know, didn't exist when you and I were in training. But now, you know, they would never do surgery without a timeout to ask everybody, the nurses and the doctors, do we know what surgery we're doing? Do we know which side we're doing it on? Does anyone have any questions about what we're doing? Right? The, the modern electronic health systems, every time, you know, I prescribe a medication. If that medication has an interaction with another medication that the patient is taking, I immediately see it on the screen. They say, do you, you know, recognize that drug A is associated with an interaction in drug B? Right? So you remember, in New York, there was the famous Libysian case of a young woman who died at a private hospital due to a medicine interaction. Well, in modern times, you would prescribe a medicine and you would immediately see that interaction. So I, I think that the right policies and procedures are in place to try to drive that number as low as possible.
What are the rates of complaint that H and H receives?
Well, complaints are also a little bit of a challenge in that we try to encourage them. We try to encourage the idea that people complain. We want them to, first, because that's how we learn. And second, because that's the only way you can make a service recovery, is if you, if people complain. So, I mean, we get lots of complaints. The food, lack of private room, waiting times. But we, and again, we don't, we don't view increased complaints as necessarily a bad thing. We view failure to service recover as a bad thing. And obviously, there's a difference between a complaint as in, I don't like the food or my meal arrived cold, or I wish I was in a private room from my surgery was wrong. So the, the surgery went wrong, that's a quality improvement issue that has to be very tightly reviewed. Complaints can be like, we already know that right now there are, close to your home, there are more complaints about the wait times at King's Hospital because in the emergency room, because it's a lot busier than it used to be. These things are sort of directly predictable. So I don't, I don't have a specific number. Do you?
No, I don't.
They are, but they are tracked. Every single hospital, and the, each hospital has it by food, space, wait time, other. So that, that's, and we're happy to provide that.
You know, as a nurse, I'm going to ask about the malpractice. What's the number look like?
So our overall malpractice is lower than other systems as, as a total dollar amount. I believe one reason is that we don't do unnecessary surgeries. We are a system that exists only to take care of people's needs because nobody is making money in our system over doing more. So I think that accounts for, we're doing a much higher percentage of emergency cases. You know, for example, we don't do plastic surgery unless there's a medical reason for plastic surgery. So we don't do a lot of the things that tend to bring you the large malpractice suits.
And about, how do you manage misdiagnosis?
Could, I'm sorry, could you say the last word?
Misdiagnosis.
Misdiagnosis. Misdiagnosis occurs, there was a recent JAMA internal medicine paper that looked at patients who were, this was national data, looking at patients who had been transferred from a, a regular floor to an ICU and found that twenty-two percent had a misdiagnosis or mistake. National data. And I, I mention that just to say, you know, doctors, nurses, we're all human. Healthcare is a very hard thing. Even the best doctors, best nurses don't always get it right. What we do have is we have great decision support from our electronic health record. We have free and easy to use up-to-date, which is the modern. which is the modern textbook. We try very hard to empower our nurses to question doctors. We don't want nurses to say, yes, doctor. We're very, you know, we want nurses to independently, if the doctor says, and I recently reviewed a case where I was so thrilled because the doctor ordered a medication and the nurse refused. I'm like, that's exactly what we want. We want the nurses to feel fully empowered to say, no, I'm not giving that medication. So, I mean, I think that, you know, this is as much as the national, you know, people have come up with to try to prevent misdiagnosis. But it does happen in our system and every other system I know.
Well, I'm thinking about my days, we didn't have much to say. We don't have, we did not have that autonomy. And I love that, that we can tell the doctor. But at the same time, I think one of the things that improved us a lot, we started having round with the doctors.
Yes.
So that way, the communication is understanding and see where I'm going with you. I'm here to care for the patient with you, not for you.
Equals. We are very big believers in equals, that interdisciplinary rounds are rounds of equals.
Yeah. When medical malpractice occurs, what step does H&amp;H takes to ensure that it should never happen again?
Well, every case where something goes wrong, including what we call good catches, where something could have gone wrong. So even if nothing has gone wrong, say someone is misidentified. I reviewed a case recently where someone goes into a waiting room, calls a name, and the wrong person answers. Right, and there was no, you know, check of date of birth until much later. Nothing bad happened.
Thank God.
But we still look at that case.
Yes.
That is, that is a good catch. Someone caught the case and realized, oh, no, you're not this person. Nothing happened, no negativity. So every case where either something goes wrong or there is a good catch where something could have gone wrong. Someone ordered a medication that was contraindicated. Someone ordered an amount that was contraindicated. Each of those is reviewed at the facility. And then as a system with our board, we review a set number of cases at every single hospital. And every case where something went wrong or could have gone wrong has to have a correction plan of how do you make sure that it never happens? Often, it's, it can be a teaching program. So for example, reminding people, names are a terrible identifier. People have the same name, people change names, two identifiers. Everybody has to have two identifiers. If you're in a healthcare system and you're not asked your name and date of birth each time, there's a problem. There should always be two identifiers. So it's constantly reminding people, did you ask what their date of birth is? Not sufficient to just ask their name. Sometimes it's putting a process in place. We're not going to use this catheter, we're going to use this catheter. So each case is very individual, but each one is reviewed with and required to have a plan of how to prevent this in the future.
Thank you. We usually do date of birth, name, and check the ID.
Yes.
Because that way, you know it's that person. I think my colleague have another question, Ma'am Marado.
So when you speak about complaints, is this information coming via the way of like a patient experience survey?
So a variety of ways. We have signs all over the place. If you have an issue, please call, and it's the patient relations.
Okay.
And then we are part of the national survey. So every patient gets a survey. When my mom was hospitalized at Bellevue for a hip fracture, she gets a survey, comes to her house confidential. She can say whatever she wants. We never see the response. It goes directly to this national response that then sends you your grades based on all of the patients.
And what organization is that through?
It's Hix, it's Hixis. What is the healthcare?
Okay.
We all call it Hixis, but it's a federal agency.
And is it just through the mail or is it through email as well?
I think they do both. But have you gotten emails? Right, I mean, it's, all hospital systems use the same one. So it sounds like they do emails as well.
And is this public knowledge and where can we find that?
Yes, absolutely. You could find on the web, for any hospital that you go to. The slight problem, and you might have guessed this problem, low response rates. So you tend to get the most satisfied and the least satisfied. And you kind of lose a lot of the middle.
Thank you. Now, Dr. Katz, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart and all the team. And we appreciate you came out, so answered those questions. It was a pleasure to have you in this room and all your team. So thank you all. And continue making sure that we uplift people and address the inequities and you serve the underserved. And seeing the hospital balance and economically, that's a great thing. But we need to address the rest of the things that we need to address. Lacks sickle cell disease to make sure that we have more centers around, to make sure that we help New York City. That's it. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now turn to the public testimony. We will be limiting public testimony today to two minutes each. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute. You and the sergeant at arms will set the timer and will give you the go ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. For in-person panel, we will be calling Naveen Swalmin. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Narcees. My name is Naveen Swalmin, and I am the Health Justice Advocate with New York Lawyers for the Public Interest, Nopi. At the outset, we want to thank the City Council for continuing the Immigrant Health Initiative, which has directly supported Nopi's programs aimed at improving the health and well-being of immigrant New Yorkers and their families through health education, outreach, and sustained policy advocacy. In this budget process, we call on the council to continue defending viral, vital city services investments from budget cuts that will inevitably lead to loss of access and inequitable healthcare outcomes. We want to thank Chairperson Narcees for sponsoring and introducing legislation that would create a new Office of Organ Transplant Equity. Within the Department of Health, the office would handle providing accessible information and specialized care coordination to all New Yorkers about life-saving organ transplant options available in every borough. Currently, many of Nopi's immigrant clients with renal disease are forced to depend on long-term dialysis treatments, which are debilitating, less effective, and far more expensive than kidney transplants. In 2021, Nopi launched a transit, a pilot transplant pipeline with the Kidney Transplant Program at SUNY Downstate Medical Center. In the years since its establishment, this program has trained hundreds of healthcare and legal service providers. And as a result, seven formerly uninsured people have reached kidneys, have received kidney transplants in the past year. And several more are expected to be listed or transplanted this year, which is really exciting for us, really happy. We hope to continue our partnership with SUNY Downstate, and we are alarmed by the sudden news of its restructuring, seeing as it is the only safety net hospital in New York City with a kidney transplant program and the only organ transplantation program located in Brooklyn. The proposal put forth would relegate SUNY to a subsidiary role within a designated wing at Kings County Hospital Center, and such a reconfiguration would lead to the termination of SUNY Downstate's operation. The closure would worsen health inequities throughout the city as SUNY Downstate serves a predominantly low-income, medically underserved population, including patients grappling with end-stage renal disease who face immediate repercussions. We urge the committee to take oversight steps to ensure that kidney transplant patients from across the city who are currently receiving care at SUNY Downstate continue to receive life-saving care. We extend deep gratitude, Chairperson Narcees, for the opportunity to provide testimony today. We look forward to continuing our partnership with the City Council to advance health, immigrant disability, and environmental justice to all New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And now we have question with Downstate being closed. So we're going to continue fighting.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chair. Now we'll move to the Zoom testimony. I will call on Meda Gosh.
Time starts.
Good afternoon. My name is Meda Gosh, and I'm the Senior Policy Coordinator for Health at CECF, the Coalition for Asian American Children and Families. Thank you very much, Chair Narcees, for holding this hearing and providing this opportunity to testify. Founded in 1986, CECF is nation's only Pan-Asian children and families advocacy organization and leads the fight for improved and equitable policy systems, funding, and services to support those in need. The preliminary budget for FY25 fails to fund key initiatives that are funded FY24 adopted budget, including $5 million in FY24 for the Mental Health Continuum. The Mental Health Continuum is innovative, evidence-based model for supporting students with significant mental health needs by integrating a range of direct services and developing stronger partnerships between schools and hospitals-based mental health clinics. We want to stress in partnerships between, in particular, the social-emotional needs of API young people in our New York City public school system to emphasize importance of maintaining funding for the Mental Health Continuum, as well as ensuring the budget properly supports mental health care for our youth. To ensure to, for mental health care for all, the city needs to invest in developing a continuum of care that incorporates both non-traditional and traditional forms of care, identify a range of access points, and look to redefine safety away from the absence of crime and towards a presence of wellness across communities. We would also like to uplift the need for more language service support in our hospitals for asylum seekers community. We have heard from many API communities are crossing the southern border and then arriving in NYC and facing huge, huge language barriers. For instance, we have spoken with groups working with families coming from Afghanistan requiring language support in Farisi and Pashdo. It is critical that our hospitals have enough language service funding to support the additional language need of asylum seekers. CECF is grateful to already be partnering with H&amp;H on issues of language access, and we look forward to continuing that work. And that is of utmost importance in the well-being of all New Yorkers. Overall, we see a need for more intentional collaboration between the city and community-based organizations to better identify language access and mental health services gaps in our communities and define and implement solutions that will have a direct positive impact on the well-being of all of our communities.
Sorry, I'm excited.
Thank you.
Ginger Davis.
Time is starting.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon to Chair Narcees and to Chair Shulman and all of the council members. This has actually been a really great meeting to be able to hear all this information and to hear what Dr. Katz is saying about the changes and the improvements that are being made within HHC. And I also want to echo what Chair Narcees said about it being way overdue to provide quality care and continuity of care for sickle cell disease, particularly in adult medicine. We are losing our young people who age out of pediatrics, and not all of the hospitals have adult programs. And it is very painful to be seeing our young people between the ages of 19 and 35 dying because they don't have continuity of care. And the biggest problem is that healthcare providers aren't properly educated about sickle cell. I think doctors know more about the stigma and consider adults with sickle cell disease to be drug seekers and drug addicts rather than to deal with the emergent issue that they are being faced with at the time. And, you know, we have things like Project Echo with both CBO to provide an education, which Dr. Katz is aware of through Jacoby Hospital, our end stigma echo, and also Johns Hopkins, who were part of their network, has a provider to provide a echo. And when we go on these things, the doctors who show up are the doctors who are already caring for the population. We need internists and specialists from other disciplines to come onto these provider echo education programs so they can begin to learn more. And particularly, we would like to see that the American Society of Hematology's guideline, clinical guidelines for sickle cell be adopted across HHC to give proper care for this population. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. And, Dr. Katz, I look forward to meeting with you one day to further this conversation.
Thank you, Ginger. You have been a great partner in sickle cell disease, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Same here, so have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Lamb.
Time is starting.
My name is Julie Lamb. As founder of Master Get America, a grassroots awareness campaign created to support public health and people with weakened immune system. I testify today to emphasize the urgency for New York and the rest of our country to embrace a layered approach in mitigation. Please fund Bill 0332. New York City needs free COVID-19 rapid antigen tests and masks to promote prevention. Vaccination and treatment don't stop transmission, as we know. In general, pharmaceutical interventions are not applicable to everyone due to their immune systems and medical conditions. We need to promote the use, usage of non-pharmaceutical intervention to ensure health equity. The cost of COVID-19 rapid tests and masks generally discourage people from using them. Providing free access to masks and tests give people more options and the community as a whole more protection. COVID is a serious threat to the high-risk community, which I am a part of. I am immunocompromised because of an autoimmune disorder. I know that each infection will exacerbate my underlying condition. My condition prohibited me from taking the mRNA and protein-based vaccine. Many people like me can't survive without mask protection. COVID-19 has already killed millions of people. At least 65 million people have long COVID around the world. Roughly three-quarter of US adults are at high risk of severe COVID because of medical conditions and disabilities. People who get long COVID require comprehensive care and a complicated diagnostic process. Our country doesn't have safety nets or universal health coverage. Most people don't have paid sick leave. Hospital and medical costs can make a person without adequate health insurance homeless. Ventilation is poor in most buildings. Virus spread in the air. I am suffering from too long COVID conditions.
Time is both.
I have gone through hell, and I really don't want to get infected again. I hope that we will pass the bill and we can get free, high-quality N95 and KN95 masks through the mail, and that will help normalize mitigation and keep New York City safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dr. Lucky Tran.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dr. Lucky Tran, and I am a scientist and public health communicator who works at Columbia, and I'm also a member of COVID Advocacy New York. I'm testifying today to urge the city to continue funding and implementing COVID prevention efforts. I am concerned about the prospect of COVID budgets being cut because as the World Health Organization reminds us, we are still in a pandemic. The data tells us this too. This winter surge is actually the second largest of the pandemic, according to wastewater levels, and we are still seeing high levels of death and chronic illness caused by COVID. One of the most important public health problems that isn't being meaningfully addressed is that people who are most vulnerable or high-risk have to delay medical care because of the lack of COVID protections. This, to me, as someone who works in healthcare, is absolutely unacceptable. You can do something tangible to address this crisis. You can require masks in healthcare settings. I appreciate that H&amp;H having a mask requirement in place for a few weeks. However, this came weeks too late, and it's already been lifted despite COVID levels still being, still high. No one should have to risk getting sick in order to access healthcare. You can also do more to make sure that staff and patients and visitors have access to N95 and high-quality You can also do more to make sure that staff and patients and visitors have access to N95 and high-quality masks in healthcare settings. In practice, too often, I've experienced myself and I've heard the same from others, that many people, including staff, have trouble accessing high-quality masks when in healthcare settings. I really think we can do better on this. You should also be providing funding to help all New Yorkers access high-quality masks, tests, and other COVID prevention tools for free. Many still want to take action to protect themselves and their communities, but they can't afford the tools needed to do so. The federal programs for masks and tests have ended, and weren't sufficient in the first place. The city already spends money to provide important health tools like condoms, hygiene products, and harm reduction items. COVID is still around and causing harm, so the city should continue to spend money on COVID prevention tools, too. On this, thank you to Chairperson Narcisse for introducing Bill INT three, three, two, which would provide free masks, other PPE, and rapid tests to all New Yorkers through the mail. I urge the New York City Council to pass it. Your actions right now will be recorded in history. You can choose to acknowledge that we are still in a pandemic and COVID is still around and causing harm, or you can deny things and make things worse. You all have the ability to take actions that make an incredible, that could make an incredible difference to the lives of many New Yorkers, particularly the most marginalized. I urge you all to go down in history for the right reasons. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. Next is Ilana Levin.
Time starts.
Okay, you can hear me now? My name's Ilana Levin. I'm a member of Juice for Racial and Economic Justice. I got COVID in December twenty-twenty-two, despite being in excellent shape, having all the boosters and Paxlavid. My COVID still became long COVID, and I can't return to the active life I had. Long COVID can happen to anyone, and it's happening to at least fifteen percent of New Yorkers still, many of whom will become too sick to work. And each time you get COVID, the risk is over and over and compounding. The only reason I was able to tell that I had COVID and take steps to prevent spreading it was because H&amp;H used to have a free testing truck right outside my apartment. My home tests, I was, I was negative on all of my home rapid tests. The only positive test I had was that free PCR that I got at one of your trucks, and now those trucks are gone. Those testing sites were outdoors, which also meant that I could get tested without spreading COVID or catching COVID. Now, New York has ended the mask requirement in healthcare settings. That means in order to pursue medical care, we have to put ourselves at risk of getting COVID again. Even when I wear my N95 mask, which I do all the time, studies show that I have a two-hour time before I can inhale an infectious dose of COVID. And that's assuming I don't have to take my mask off to drink water or have some test where my mask can't be on. I saw in your hospital report that there's been a steep increase in the number of people going to hospitals who are leaving without getting care. I constantly hear from people that when they go to the hospital, the waiting rooms are full of people who are not wearing masks and are coughing, and they leave because they are in danger. The flimsy surgical masks that are handed out, which is the majority of what people are being given, I know because doctors are telling me they don't, they don't get N95s at work. Those flimsy masks don't filter the air. They're not comfortable. And when you give people tools that don't work well, they don't use them. I don't see how it is ADA compliant that medical settings in New York are inaccessible to people like me. Where am I supposed to get care without getting sicker? Most immunocompromised people don't even know their status. I have nowhere I can get medical care safely in New York. If you've ever wondered what you would do-
Time expires.
-start of AIDS crisis, not the end, the start. You are doing it now. There are things we can do now, even without federal support, things like respirator mass distribution. Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Narcisse. Requirements in healthcare settings, and getting air filtration, even if it's just running a HEPA machine that I can freaking buy. I don't know why you guys can't. And opening windows. These are all things that can be done now so that people are no longer getting COVID and becoming more disabled, too disabled to work in med, from attending medical settings and trying to get healthcare.
Thank you.
Um, Anna Pacman.
Time start.
Hi, um, I'm here in my personal capacity, and, um, I am a New Yorker. Um, I'm disabled. Um, and I am here in support of the new bill that would allow any New Yorker who wants them to be able to access high-quality KN95 and N95 masks and rapid tests through a website. It's incredibly simple and smart. It's been successful for the federal government, and New York needs to lead in this area, especially as the federal program has wrapped up. I have personally spent about a thousand dollars on, um, personal protective equipment, like masks and tests and HEPA filters in the past year. Um, it's an incredible privilege and sacrifice to be able to do that. There are many, many New Yorkers who could not afford to even entertain that idea and deserve to have the same level of protection, um, that these life-saving, um, materials can provide people, especially as most people now are not testing, not masking, um, and none of us here are an island. Um, it's important, not only for me to have, um, these items to protect myself, but also for people who I'm in contact with to be able to protect me. Um, going back to, you know, that time at the beginning of the pandemic, when, you know, we all heard that message, "I protect you, you protect me." That's who we are as New Yorkers. That's what we need to be about. And we need to give people the opportunity to do the right thing and for everyone to be able to access it, no matter their financial status. Um, I also would like to, you know, second the support for year-round mask requirements in New York City H&amp;H facilities at the bare minimum. Um, as a person with a disability, it is too dangerous for me to go get care in hospitals. Um, so it, it's something that could easily be done, and it's something that would ensure that people like myself and others who are testifying here have our ADA rights met, which are mandated by federal law, and the city should be doing more to enforce. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Myra Batchholder.
Time has started.
Hi, thank you. My name is Myra Batchholder, and I lead COVID Advocacy Initiative. I, and COVID Advocacy New York. We are still in the midst of the COVID pandemic. We are still losing around one thousand to two thousand people in the US every week to COVID. Millions of people are still struggling with long COVID and other serious health issues brought on by COVID. As New York City Council discusses the budget, there are a number of things New York City should do to improve COVID prevention. I'm here to highlight several. First, New York City must continue to provide funding for free, high-quality N95 and KN95 masks and COVID tests. Everyone should have access to the tools needed to protect themselves and their families and others from COVID. Many New Yorkers can't afford to purchase high-quality masks and tests. In two thousand twenty-two, approximately twenty-three percent of New York City residents were unable to afford basic necessities like housing and food. Your ability to protect yourself and your family from getting COVID and to know whether you have COVID should not depend on your bank account. CDC's decision to end the five-day COVID isolation guidance puts even more people at risk. Free, high-quality masks and tests should be provided at H&amp;H facilities, to community groups, at public locations across the city, and also directly to the public. And these programs should continue. I also urge New York City Council to provide funding and pass bill INT zero, three, three, two, twenty-twenty-four, that will provide free masks, other PPE, and rapid tests to New Yorkers through the mail. Thank you, Chairperson Narcisse, for introducing this important bill. Masks and rapid tests should be distributed through the mail so that everyone can access them, including those at higher risk who are avoiding indoor public spaces. The federal government ended their free mask and rapid test programs, and people need to have access to these essential tools. In addition, New York City Council must do everything it can to require masks and other COVID prevention efforts in healthcare settings that New York City Council has oversight of, including New York City H&amp;H. Ending the mask requirement in healthcare settings has led to more unsafe medical settings and more people postponing needed medical care, particularly people at higher risk. Polls indicate that healthcare settings are the top place that public supports requiring masks. No one should have to risk their life and health to access healthcare. It was great to see New York City reinstate their mask requirements at H&amp;H during the worst of the winter surge, but that is not enough. I urge the New York City Council to do everything they can to ensure masks continue to be required at New York City H&amp;H facilities and that other COVID prevention efforts are also taken. I urge New York City to provide funding and support for these and other COVID efforts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Um, Greg Levine.
Time has started.
Uh, hello. Uh, I'm Greg Levine. I'm a freelance journalist, and in January of twenty-twenty-three, I caught COVID. I, I was still limiting public activity at the time. I was still wearing masks in public settings, but so far, a few others were. When I finally tested negative and came out of isolation, my illness did not seem to end. I had shortness of breath, chest pain, tachycardia, elevated blood pressure, extreme fatigue, what we now understand to be long COVID. My life ever since has been defined by this disease. In a way, I'm lucky. I live in New York City. We have two good programs here that are looking at long COVID. It took me months, but I finally got in to see qualified caring professionals who had the experience to treat my illness. But here's the wild thing. Even though I was already sick, and I was aware that another infection could make me sicker, even though I was in two of the country's best hospitals, every trip to the doctor, at every trip, I was surrounded by people who are not taking even the most basic precautions to protect themselves or to protect others. Patients, many of them coughing, sniffling, unmasked, sat with me in crowded waiting rooms. While in the early months of twenty-twenty-three, maybe staff and doctors mostly wore masks. Uh, by summer, masking became the exception rather than the rule. Around the country, tens of thousands are still hospitalized with COVID. Hundreds, sometimes thousands, are dying every week. This is still true to this day. But in these hospitals, the abandonment of mask requirements reminded me of a quote from the late Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. "It was like throwing away your umbrella in a rainstorm because you weren't getting wet." Here I was, suffering, yet every doctor I visited required me to make a bargain with myself. What's more risky? Getting, not getting the care I need, or chancing a reinfection by going to places that were hell-bent on being back to normal? In November, after having spent about ninety minutes in an imaging center where I was masked, but absolutely no one else was, not patients, not staff, I contracted an upper respiratory infection. At first, it was not COVID, or at least I tested negative, but after several weeks-
Time expires.
-I wound up testing negative again. Is this where we want to be back to? The recent trend, you know, as exhibited by the CDC, is to adopt a fatalism that sounds like Yogi Berra. We can't make rules because no one will follow them. That doesn't make sense. It's like saying, "Don't wear seat belts." Some don't wear seat belts, so we shouldn't require them. Obviously, that's not how government should work. You have the power to require masks at public hospitals. You have the means to fund the program, give New Yorkers access to high-quality masks. You could even start to require cleaner indoor air. You could fund more access to better-
Can you try to wrap it up?
I will wrap it up. Current policies assume that there are sick people, and there are healthy people, and it's only the sick people who need to take care. But that's not how the way life works. At some point, we will all be vulnerable. At this moment, the SARS-CoV-2 virus is presenting the challenge, so let's meet it. Let's each and every one of you give us the help to help others, like with masks, like with rapid available testing. We are all each other's keepers, and this is a simple step that is in your hands to help us. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Paul Hennessy.
Time starts.
Hi, I'm calling in strong support for NYC to provide the funding for free N95s and tests. Council must fund bill INT zero, three, three, two. This is an incredible bill that will keep New Yorkers safe from COVID, as well as other airborne illnesses, pollution, and wildfire smoke. I also urge the city to mandate respirators and clean air in all healthcare settings, pharmacies, schools, and public transit enforced underground setting. Respirators, not baggy blues. New Yorkers deserve filtered air and safe access to healthcare. Consider funding hospitals more for ventilation upgrades. Anything less is medical negligence and puts vulnerable patients at risk. My grandma was infected by COVID at a cancer treatment center because the staff wasn't masked. Hospital-acquired COVID infections will result in more lawsuits as well, and rightfully so. A great way to save money is respirator and clean air investments. I, for one, will certainly be suing if I catch a hospital-acquired infection. Finally, I would encourage the Council and New York's healthcare system to condemn the recent CDC's decision of reducing COVID isolation policies to one day. This is a dangerous decision, not based in any science or fact, but convenience. It downblazes the seriousness of a BSL-three pathogen, ignores the contagious period of ten days or more, and ignores the long-term effects of COVID. New York deserves better than this and should issue a statement condemning CDC's anti-science and anti-health policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Negozie Alston.
Time start.
My name is Negozie Alston. I'm a disability justice trainer and currently organizing with Mask Block NYC. I am disabled, and to my knowledge, I have never had COVID. That said, I'm constantly experiencing barriers, self-advocating basically every time I leave my house. I look, insert a blust phrase here, being individual, bringing individually-wrapped masks for other providers to my doctor's appointments and plugging my air purifier in. The city of New York has been doing an abysmal job at keeping New Yorkers safe. Instead of following the line of the fascist cop Mayor Eric Adams, you need to be making sure black, poor, disabled New Yorkers are safe. High-quality respirators and high-quality tests are expensive, and the city has neglected us. Local community groups such as Mask Block NYC and People's PPE have been filling the very large gaps that the state has left us with. We are still in the pandemic, and we are still fucking dying. Bad air. The air quality was well over a hundred and ten on February tenth, and I know this because I plan to enjoy a local day at the park. But like, the city cannot wait for a bad air day to hand out high-quality respirators. Be fucking proactive. With the CDC dropping its guidelines, we have been completely left to fend for ourselves. It is difficult to find remote work. Employers and society are hostile to us, to those of us who continue to mask. Masking needs to be normalized, and the city owes us access to resources. We are currently still in a surge of seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand COVID cases per day in the United States. As layers of mitigation continue to disappear, everyday basic tasks become burdensome with trying to avoid catching COVID. I'm often the only person masking in the grocery store, the pharmacy, medical facilities. Leaving the burden on disabled people is trash, not to mention eugenics. Over fifteen-hundred people continue to die from COVID every week, and nobody fucking cares. It is exhausting, being gaslighted by medical staff, from receptionists to providers, from asking whether I have COVID because I'm wearing an N95, which literally happened at a doctor's appointment this morning, to being outright hostile for asking providers to wear N95s to help mitigate the transmission of COVID. This is on top of the fact that incarcerated folks in New York City jails do not have access to high-quality masks. Free them all.
Time expires.
You all need to step the fuck up, or bodies will start piling on your doorsteps, I promise.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, if anyone else in the chamber or on Zoom wishes to speak, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands, we would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by the committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to seventy-two hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Seeing no other hands or, uh, for participants at this time, I will now turn it to the chair to close the, um, to close, uh, to do her closing remarks. Thank you.
First, I want to say thank you to everyone that showed up today. Um, the administration that come, I mean, that came today, Dr. Katz. Um, I appreciate every single of our team that actually put all the work together for us to be here. Um, it is, it takes a whole village of the staff here, but Manura, you have been excellent. I don't know what to say about Ms. Giants, that been, you know, excellent. My team, Saye Joseph, that been on top of it, and Florentine Cabaret, that's, um, leading the team. So I am so much appreciated for everyone, Sergeant, that present, to the people that testify. It takes the whole of us for us to continue advocating for addressing the inequities in healthcare. And the budget time is the best way to do it, to make sure that, um, we spend the money wisely and, um, to protect the New York City healthcare. So thank you all. God bless, and we're finished.